This is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom. On February twenty second, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting. Has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice. Of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board. At the municipal complex. And by transmitting a copy of same. And by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton packet town topics, the times. Trentonian by filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton. On February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. And has been placed on the municipal website. W W W Princeton NJ dot gov slash meetings. Pursuant to the extension. Of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order two ninety-two. In accordance with the emergency remote public meeting protocol for local public bodies. To conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public. Notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular. And special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Will be held electronically by a zoom was transmitted. The Princeton packet town topics. And the times and was filed with the clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April. Two thousand twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex. And on the Princeton website and to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same. To the Princeton packet town topics, the times. Trentonian Comcast media. And by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Alright. So. Claudia, um, do you want to call a roll?
Ten. Ms. Coulson. Here. Davich.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber.
Here.
Mr. Penumbel. Mr. Stein.
Here.
Miss here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, having a little glitch here. Um. Okay, uh, we have, uh. Three resolutions this evening.
Four.
Four, excuse me, four. Um. The first one is, uh, case number Z twenty-two dash two twenty-three. Lincoln Court. Ten to twenty-four and sixteen to eighteen Vandevaner. Block twenty-seven oh four lots seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-three, and seventy.
Um. Board members, I have a couple of comments. Uh, after the resolution was prepared and sent to you, I received requests for some clarifications. Um. And, uh. Revisions. So I'd like to go through those with you. Seemed easier to do it in person rather than circulating another draft because it's a long revolution. And then, of course, if anybody on the board. Or comments or changes they would like to make. Then, of course, we will do that. Uh, if we go to page three, there is a zoning chart there. And we're just clarifying that. The applicant is proposing nine parking spaces. That means they need a variance relief for three, not five spaces. And that same correction or clarification appears. Later in the resolution on page fifteen, again, it's a clarification that it's three spaces. That's the required areas. If we go on to page four. Second full paragraph. Uh, we're just clarifying again that the building footprint as a result of the applicant's revisions. Would be point seven five feet on the north side of the building which faces Lincoln Court. And point seven five feet on the south side which faces Nassau Street. We've also made corrections. We corrected the spelling of a couple people's names and some. Very minor typos, which I'm not going to go through with you. Um, the same correction on the building footprint is made on page seven. Mister Chimalak's testimony, their planner and engineer on page eight. You're going to clarify. Yeah, who can is providing two electric vehicle. Serving servicing devices. And continuing with his testimony of page nine. We have. Clarified an incomplete sentence. So. It will provide that the driveway serving the parking lot at the rear of sixteen eighteen Van Veenender currently comes up and we've been our avenue. The entrance to the region figured lot would be moved so as to enter the lot from Lincoln Court. And then heading now towards the. End of the resolution on page seventeen. Uh, engineering has requested that we add a condition, this is paragraph sixteen. To provide for review of the sprinkler system and fire hydrant location with the fire subcofficial. And that same change again occurs. Paragraph, page eighteen, the very last paragraph. Again, review sprinkler system and fire hydrant location with the fire subcofficial. Um, the applicant's attorney is aware of these revisions and it's understanding these are acceptable to him. So I didn't know, uh, anybody else has any comments or, uh, questions they wanted to raise.
Yes, I have, I had comments on, on this resolution.
Okay.
Um. Now. As you, on, on page four.
Yep.
Third paragraph.
Yeah.
We talk about in the middle of it, uh. Mister Bridger noted that the applicant revised the apartment building. Design to remove all windows on the western facade. That which face the Triumph Brewery. Which I agree with. That's, but I think that's contradicted. In the resolution. On page sixteen. If you.
Okay, we're, okay, um, and Michael, my understanding is that. Um. The board at the last hearing decided the applicant could put the windows on the western facade. So I'm glad you're raising it because that's what I understood the board agreed to. Was laid in the hearing, but. The question was made, do you want to do that? And my understanding, and that's what my notes indicate, was that the board said, yes. That's what we want. So that's why that is correct. That is what Derek testified. And the applicant did provide plans and said, that's fine, we removed them. We're not asking for a variance, but that the board on its own said. No, you know, we think there should be windows on that facade, and that's why in paragraph. On page sixteen. Um. It has now changed because we're into the findings now, so. I put that because my understanding was the applicant was, was, was happy with that. They were willing to have the windows. They wanted to have windows, but they'd removed it. Because they didn't want to. Have additional variances. So I'm, I'm glad you're raising it because if there's a question about. Whether the board wants it, then we should certainly, um, talk about it now.
I think that window was in the living room of the first floor. Unit, the rear unit. Uh, as you come in the front door, the, the, uh, the unit on the right, and that window was in the living room. Uh, it was the only window, I believe, in the living room. And, um. So when, again, they did talk about it. Uh. In the hearing, the idea of not having a window in the living room was, uh. We felt, I believe, um. It was a good idea to have it.
Okay, so it's for one window. In the living room. Uh. Of the first floor. Affordable unit. Then on the western facade.
Yes.
Facing. Old Triumph.
Yes. That window is actually set back from the property line, I don't know, the width of the stair, so it's. Seven feet or something, six feet, but it's not right on the property line.
Okay. All right, and then, and then the same change would happen at the top of seventeen. It's, it's, uh, a continuing paragraph at the top of the page. So instead of saying provide windows on the western facade, instead it would just be again, the one window.
I guess I, I didn't remember that. And I definitely, I, if, if we. If that was agreed to. Then we're essentially waving the. The, the ten foot.
Yes.
Basically, almost like fire safety requirement. I, I, I never thought we did that, so.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't, um. First of all, that's a blank wall on Triumph Brewing. And it, it's not right on the property line. And I think the, I think the discussion, at least the way I remember it, was it was a better idea to have a window in the living room than not. The bedrooms had windows, but the living room did not. We felt that, I'm going to bring the drawing and look at it.
Derek, is that consistent with what you remember or not?
There was one window in the back unit, and I think the fire separation was five feet or something like that because the other building didn't have windows.
Yeah.
I mean, Michael, the, the, the section that we're getting, giving a. Variance from is in the zoning ordinance, so it's not a, uh. It's not in another code. It's actually a, a zoning standard.
Well. Is the ten foot a zoning standard or is that a construction code?
The construction code is, is, uh, is five feet.
Where's the ten feet? Come from Steve?
Seventeen eighty-three eighty-three. It's a zoning code.
A zoning code.
And it was even more. Unworkable before. I mean. It was a, a formula based on the length of the facade, a lower and smaller wall, and you had to be, so this is. An attempt to make it more user friendly and. To work in downtown areas, but if they were both on the property line, neither one could have a window. Triumph is on the property line. They can't have any windows, so. This doesn't. Conflict with the fire code.
Okay.
Are there any other comments, Karen, or changes on that?
No, I don't have any unless other board members do.
I guess I, I have one other, one other question. Um. And it relates to the windows, um. That leaves, if, if I'm understanding everything correctly now, one affordable unit. That doesn't meet the code regarding. A window for a bedroom and a window for a. Living room. Which I voted in favor of granting that. But there's no reference to. The actual code that there would be a variance. For, and that would, that. That would be, um, ten B dash two eight.
The other affordable unit has got a window in the living room. The way they did that is they separated the bedrooms. And created a hallway effectively that goes from the living room to the outside wall, and there's a window there.
Um. Yeah, I heard you men, I heard you mention that last meeting. I just kind of smiled. How you.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
How you stretched with them on that. I, I, you know, I don't know if we ever. Truly discussed it, but maybe it didn't merit discussion.
It meets the intent of the code. But it doesn't, it's not, it's not what I would consider good. Practice, but it meets the intent of the code because essentially that hallway is part of the living room.
Hallway is a hallway, but sometimes it's part of the living room. Okay.
In this case, in this case, the way it is, there's nothing that separates it from the living room.
Please, please, I mean, I, I understand. I understand what you're saying, but you're saying what, what they said too.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and it was a real stretch.
Yeah.
I will. Interject just a little. I have a little bit of trepidation and concern going forward. There's going to be a few of these infill type projects. And even though we don't, and, uh, um, as a zoning board. Have to police it on whether it meets. The state's affordable housing. You know, um. Affordable units should have the same amenities like windows, um, as the market. And they shouldn't be placed in sort of. Negative locations in developments. Um, I'm not saying that this one. You know, is real, real egregious. And it's a small building, but. Um. I'm not sure about. Some of these decisions we're. Taking the liberty to make.
I would agree with that.
And I realize it might be. A little bit. In the weeds. On the affordable housing side, but. You know, luckily. The applicant. Is supposed to satisfy. Some other body. I, it's probably the municipal attorney. Under the agreement they signed, but. You know. Yeah. I, I, I went with this project and, and I, I, I still do, but. I think. Be, be aware that, you know. Granting too many variances. Especially if it relates to health, safety. Gets a little dicey.
I agree with you, Michael. I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay, um. So fine with the explanation on my comments. Um. And, yeah. I'm good with the revised resolution.
So moved. Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll?
We need a second.
Wait, who moved that?
Uh. Schreiber, and then Stephen seconded it.
Wait, I'm sorry, who moved it?
Who moved it? I'm sorry.
Michael did, right? Michael's.
No.
No, I just said I'm fine with it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I guess it was Stephen. Stephen who.
You know.
Seconded it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Who seconded?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
No one.
Okay, well then, there we go, so. Who would like to second it?
I'll second it. I, I, you know.
Okay, Claudia, please call a roll.
Coulson?
Yes.
Mister Davich?
Yes.
Mister Floyd?
Yes.
Mister Schreiber?
Yes.
Mister Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Um, our next resolution is ninety Brooks Bend. It's case number Z twenty-two dash two eighty. Block five thousand three lot two in the R one zone. The resolution is in your package. Karen, do you have any questions on the resolution?
No, no comments, no.
Do any board members have any comments? Or if none, if someone would like to make a motion?
I love the approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second it.
Okay. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Coulson?
Yes.
Mister Davich?
Yes.
Mister Floyd?
Yes.
Mister Schreiber?
Yes.
Mister Schreiber?
Yes.
Mister Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, third resolution is, uh, three thirty-eight Nassau Street, KC twenty-two dash two fifty-nine, block ninety-four oh one, lot thirty-two. Karen, any comments on the?
I do.
Before Karen starts, could I say that I recuse myself from this discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, board members, there is a condition. That I placed in this resolution. Uh, it's number four. Uh, which is obligating the applicant to comply with HPC recommendations. This is. Regarding the appearance of the proposed roof enclosure. And. My understanding was that the applicant represented, when they presented their application, that if. The board granted their side plan approval with the variances. Um, that they were going to comply with the HPC recommendations. Um, the applicant's attorney is here tonight. Brian Kennedy and Mister Kennedy feels that that's not appropriate. Um. So I will let him. Address that so he can explain why he, he feels that condition shouldn't be done.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Um, I'm sorry that Mister Schreiber stepped off, but, um. The, if you recall from last month, the, um. While we did and, and will continue to work with HPC administratively, um, the motion actually was quite specifically. Um, not, uh, moved and seconded, um, almost, uh, to give the flexibility to the applicant to add those, uh, additional. Uh, say complications to the project and I, uh, the, the request was to have it reflect the, the motion and second, um. Uh, and that, uh, that would work administratively with HPC. Um, uh, but there was a, a discussion and, and the motion for approval was actually, uh, almost to give flexibility to the applicant.
Board members, I, I think it's up to you at this point. You can advise whether. You know, when you voted for it, was, was it your intention that the applicant comply or not? Because that's what you thought you were doing. If, if you feel that you want to leave it, or that's what you anticipated, that it would be up to the applicant to comply or not. Um. Uh, then. For the purposes of this resolution, I think you need to identify tonight then. What your basis is for not requiring compliance with HPC, and I say that because the municipal land use law allows you. Um, to. For want of a better word, to override any HPC recommendations. It just says you need to explain why. So if, if your feeling is that, uh. You, you know, this was optional or up to the, uh, applicant to comply or not. Then just need to identify, uh. Why? I mean, uh, in past situations. Where the board has decided. You know, they were not going to require an applicant to comply with an HPC recommendation. Some cases you've indicated that. You feel that the. You know, the design is sufficiently compliant or that you don't agree that it's not going to. You know, be appropriate in a historic district.
Sorry, and which condition was this?
Um, it's condition number four. If you look on page five. Uh, condition number one is, uh, complying with the New Jersey administrative code with respect to noise level. Two post installation testing for the children generator. Three is an easement agreement, and four is, uh. Complying with the HPC recommendation.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Um, if, if I could just kind of interject what I recall of the meeting. Um. I have to agree that I feel that that was what, uh. That what the applicant's attorney is stating was correct. That's, that was my understanding, that they would come back to HPC. I know that there was comments about the, the hinges that HPC had talked about, and I believe that there was some conversation with. Your board that they felt that it was okay. They didn't have an objection, but that's, you know. I know I'm kind of shooting myself in the foot, but, you know, that is what I do recall from it. You know, that they would, they would come back and meet with HPC to resolve anything possible, but that they were not married to it.
Okay, so it's not an obligation. That's your understanding, that it would not be a condition. So it will be up to the applicant. If they do, that's great, and if they don't, um, they're not obligated to.
That was my understanding.
Okay, well, what's the, what's the board's feeling?
I would certainly like to see him go back and, and they did make that statement in the hearing, so I'd like them to go back. Alright.
I mean, honestly, I, uh, again, um. I'm gonna, you know, Mister Chimalak, what I have in the resolution is that. He confirmed applicant will agree to zoning office recommended condition that. And the HPC recommendation, so. Perhaps Mister Chimalak was also trying to express that. They weren't obligating the applicant to do what they would, you know, they. They, they might or they might not, um. So. If, if the board is comfortable leaving it at that. Uh. We can remove condition number four and, uh. I would though like to be able to add, and I kind of feel obligated to add something to this. I'm assuming then that the, the board's feeling would be that. It's, uh. So this would be paragraph six of the board's findings. Right now, it's that the board accepts the HPC recommendation, so we would change that to say. They don't accept them because the. You know. They, they, they feel the roof enclosure, you know, adequately addresses. The. You know, adequately, um. Intensives to the historic district.
Yeah, I don't remember having any, any problem with the roof. I, I thought it was, I, what I remember was that was, there was discussion around some of the decoration on the front of the, on the front of the building. Like she was like, as was said, with the hinges and with the.
Yeah.
brickwork and, but that's not, that's not dealing with the roof. I thought that was.
Well, it's.
They did discuss the roof.
Yeah.
It had to be shingle versus, uh. Split seam, standing seam.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, well, the standing seam on the building, right? So I think that they thought he was trying to tie the two together.
Right, and I think HPC's consensus was, Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, that they, they wanted the attention directed to the main building. And their suggestion was to make. The accessory structure less. You know, standing out or prominent and.
I see.
So. Right, they were, they were saying that it didn't need to mimic the, um.
The building, right.
The building and to simplify it by putting asphalt shingle roofs. They were supportive of that. Um, in addition to perhaps painting the door. I mean, even though it's a very good mahogany door, they felt to, again, to simplify it. That's what they were looking to do.
Um, yeah.
Well, I mean, we can change paragraph six to just say right now, it would read Historic Preservation Commission is no objection to the application, period. Begin the next sentence, the board, um, the board finds that the proposed design will adequately, uh, fit into the historic district and, uh, will leave it, will, uh, you know, allow the applicant to, to, you know, voluntarily work administratively or something with HPC.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so that means condition four comes out. Everybody else okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. I am.
All right.
Okay, is there any other comments, Karen?
No, that's it.
Any board members, any other comments? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Claudia?
Paulson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes. Okay, our last resolution is, uh, two twenty-two Snowden Farms Lane, case Z twenty-three dash three-ten, block fifty-seven oh four, lot, lot thirteen in the R four zone. Karen, do you have any comments on the resolution?
No, no comments.
Board members? Any comments? Questions?
No.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm over provo.
Thank you.
Stein, all second.
Claudia?
Paulson? Yes. David?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we now have six board members.
Actually, I think we may have seven, Harland is.
Harland here.
Yeah.
There we are. Okay, so we have seven. Um, so do we want to take this in the order that we have it?
That's cool.
Okay. All right, our first application this evening is case number Z twenty-two dash two fifty-one. Uh, thirty-seven W, thirty-seven W condominiums LLC. Thirty-seven Wigan Street, units one, two, and three. Lots, or block twenty-eight point oh two, lots thirty-four point oh two, CO one to CO three, zone R four. Okay. Uh, Karen, are all, is a roll of notices in order?
Uh, yes, the board actually began this hearing last month. So this is a continuation to the board took jurisdiction of it last month. And Mr. Tenenbaum, I believe, has listened to the tape and has signed the certification to that effect. And Harland, it, can you put your, um, we can't hear you, your audio on?
There you go.
Okay, you did listen to the tape, correct, Harland?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, very good then. So then all the members tonight, um, can participate.
Okay, um, who's going to represent this case? You were muted, there you go.
Uh, good morning, goodie, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you. Um, we did start last time, uh, if you recall, again, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for the applicants, um, here this evening, uh, which for thirty-seven Wiggins, uh, represents all of the owners of the three-unit building there that was fire damaged, uh, about a year ago this January. Uh, last month, um, we did a bit of a, no pun intended, fire drill and and got quickly to the the preview of revised design. Um, we had met with HPC and had a very successful, uh, courtesy review. Um, it's not in historic district, but it's in one of the proposed districts. Um, and, uh, by the way, uh, Claudia, thank you for moving our architect, Marina Rabina, uh, over, uh, so we can start in a, in a moment. Um, um, so we, we very quickly got to what we thought, um, was responsive, um, revisions visually to the project, um, based on our, our meeting with HPC. And, um, I'm sure you'll remember or from listening to the tape. Um, we were very appreciative of that few minutes that we had just to to show it to you before we told the whole story of the project. Um, but, uh, it was important to us and again, very thankful that you took a few minutes, uh, at the end of a late evening, uh, to see and give us an idea whether those changes were, were in your minds responsive. And I'm also thanking, uh, Ms. Kim for sticking on last month too, to to give a glance. Um, subsequently, we, uh, did provide, uh, you know, hard copies and, you know, the fully designed plans, uh, to your professionals. Uh, there was an updated memo done, uh, really kind of documenting the changes. But ultimately, they were visual changes. And here we're, we're, we're ready to tell the story of of the, of the project, um, the unfortunate story of, uh, an existing building on a, on a lot that's both undersized and non-conforming. Um, and a revised plan, uh, to kind of, if you, if anyone could take advantage of the tragedy of the fire, to modernize the units, to fix some non-conformities. And yes, we will need a floor area variance tonight, but it is a, uh, there are no minor variances, but, um, a very small amount, most of which, or good amount of which, um, is floor area associated with the front porch that, uh, we, we, and I think HPC agreed was a good addition to make it appear, um, more fitting, uh, in the neighborhood, uh, a, because it is a three-unit building already. Uh, there's no floor area exemption, uh, under the neighborhood character rules like you would for another house. So while it's designed to look like, um, any other home with this porch, we don't get the credit for that. So a big piece of the floor area, um, variance that we're seeking comes from that. Um, I believe our expert, uh, architect was sworn in, uh, probably very quickly last month. Um, uh, I don't know if it's necessary to swear her again, or if we even entered her, uh, had her accepted as an expert, uh, um, in architecture. Um, I know you've heard from her before.
We'll accept her as an expert.
Thank you.
Mr. Rabina, we'll just swear in again. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Marina, if you want to, um, do the honors and and share your screen, we could start going through. And I'll ask that we, we mark our one, uh, set of exhibits. So I guess we've, I'll say, we, we, we did add some slides to this from last time, but it's, it's the same set going forward from where we saw. And now we're actually going to start at the beginning. So, um.
Are you able to see the screen?
Yes, so I don't know if you want to go into, um, under view, we go to reading mode perhaps, that would, uh, there you go.
Okay, I'll try. How's that?
There we go, perfect.
Just a question, it says on the top, tap into Princeton. Was this taken from their publication, is that why?
Yes.
It was, okay.
Yeah, and this credits the photos and the date of the publication.
All right, and, uh, uh, Mr. Kennedy, you want all these as exhibit A one? Do you know how many slides there are?
I believe it's twenty-two, right?
I believe so, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Marina, um, uh, unfortunately, uh, you got contacted after, uh, tragedy, um, here with with this existing building, but, um, what are we looking?
Would you like me to start?
Please, yeah.
Wonderful, so thank you so much for continuing to hear our case. And as we didn't get a chance to introduce the project last time, we will briefly, um, go through and explain what happened. So this is, um, images from the article in our local Tap Into Princeton newspaper showing what happened on the day of January twenty, um, sorry, uh, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Um, I was actually driving by to take my child's music lessons and saw the fire. Uh, but what happened was for, um, the third floor unit had a fire that damaged the underside of the structure and it affected, uh, the rear. And you can see, so this is the picture from the front and this is the picture from the back. And important to notice that there's, this is an existing exterior stair, uh, that was providing exit from the top floor. Um, after the fire, the insurance company, um, send in experts to conduct an evaluation. And this is an excerpt from the photograph from the report. Uh, basically, the, um, fire structurally damaged the entire roof framing and the roof framing needs to come down. You could see the, the condition of the roof framing here. Uh, and as Ryan mentioned, we went to have a, uh, courtesy review with Historic Preservation and our, one of our owners found this photograph. This is not the building, but see this red arrow points to, this is the building right here, hiding in the corner. Don't think that this was it, but we were like, look, look, there is a porch. Uh, and then, um, Elizabeth during the, uh, preparation for the hearing also found, um, documentation on what the original roof of the building looked like. And you could see here is the porch and apparently there was a porch in the back. But the shape of the building and the roof of the building was actually different. Uh, as you could see, we, we believe a lot of modifications were done in the back, probably when it was converted to a three-unit building. So not only did the fire happen to this building, but also while we were working on the building design and we were already submitted, uh, but we were not yet deemed complete, the definition of attic changed. So our fully compliant design was no longer compliant. So we had to go and, um, rework things again. Uh, so this is to, uh, sort of tell you the story of how we arrived at the original design. We were working, uh, with the original attic rules. And this is the, the design that we presented at the HPC courtesy review. And, uh, you have the HPC comments, but the, I will try to quickly summarize. And Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, the HPC comments were very favorable about the rear of the building. So if you remember, there was that stair that was going back and forth, um, on the back of the building. And we're, uh, removing the stair and instead we're enclosing that space and basically making it an interior space where, uh, there's actually beautiful trees in the back and the, uh, hope for the residents to not look through small windows and through an emergency stair, but actually have wonderful view towards the back and towards the tree and have sense of sort of treehouse effect, uh, which, um, I think HPC was very excited about and looked favorable upon. But the comments were, we had too much contrast in our design, where we were trying to sort of identify the new and the old. And HPC were not okay with that. Uh, so they suggested a color scheme that had less contrast, which is, uh, where we went. And from the front of the building, the, what am I doing wrong here, sorry? Uh, from the front of the building, uh, another HPC comment was, since we're already not able to comply with the attic regulations the way they're now, we would rather, the HPC comment was to introduce gables, uh, similar to what exists there right now. And they were suggesting either the gable on the porch or the gable on the roof, or if we could do both, they were, um, be excited to see that, which is exactly what we did. Am I explaining that correctly, is it?
That's correct, yeah.
That's correct.
The gables are more consistent with also the neighborhood.
Ms. Kim, uh, uh, board members, uh, everything's out of sequence in this application. Um, ordinarily, you would hear from Mr. Bridger or Ms. Ms. Kim and Mr. Dobromylski. But why, the reason I interrupted is so that I can at least swear in our, um, professionals. And that way, um, if they want to respond, they can. So, Mr. Bridger, Ms. Kim, Mr. Dobromylski, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
There he is, and well, we'll get, we'll we'll, uh, we'll get, um, Mr. Dobromylski when he testifies. Okay, thank you.
I do, but I, I don't think I did a report on this, but go ahead.
No, actually, oh, you didn't, and I apologize. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, okay, should I continue?
Yes, please.
Um, okay, so now to get everybody oriented, uh, to our site plan. So as you could see, the blue dash dot line is the property line. And this dash line right here are the setbacks. And as you could see, the building probably predates zoning and therefore there are so many issues. Everything's pretty much in, in various violations of the setback. Uh, so that you could see the building is too close to the property line on this side and on this side, uh, compared to the zoning requirements. But, um, we are not changing the footprint of the building. We're not going beyond any of the existing footprint. The only actual addition we're doing is the front porch, which currently is just the stoop, what we're expanding it a little bit and putting a roof on it. Uh, and one of the questions, should I talk about this now in the report, is where would the trash be located? So at the moment, the existing trash location is right here. And we were proposing to shift the location of the trash further down, uh, so that it's not visible from the street. There is significant, um, greenery right here. And also the neighbor's, uh, garage will be blocking a view of the trash. Um, and also this portion of the building will have a, uh, nice new window. And then this portion of the facade does not have a window. That seems like a favorable location. Uh, there are two, uh, sorry, three trees on the property, one here and two really large ones right here. And no trees are being removed or impacted. And then I will walk through the plants to see, you could see, this is ro- rotated from the site plan. So this is the existing basement plan. And you could see this is that, um, stair that, um, all the way goes to the third floor at the moment. So we are proposing, there's going to be the enclosed space of the safe footprint and the stair going down from, um, from the new, uh, window, I'm sorry, doors that are opening. And then this is the expanded little L shapes expanded, uh, for the front porch. Uh, as we move up into the building, the ground floor is one unit. Uh, so originally, this building had three units individually located, one per floor. So the ground floor will continue with that same strategy. But as you could see, in the existing building, you enter and the stairs to the side. So it's really hard to get to this front room. So you kind of feel like you're going all the way around and passing through a hallway. Uh, so we're actually relocating the stair more centrally in the middle of the building. And then this unit has a little bit more breathing room. And then, as you could see, everybody was walking by pre- previously in front of these people's windows. But now that won't be happening anymore. Um, and then, um, another change on the interior of the building, again, we're not making the building footprint bigger. Uh, the interior changes, we are no longer going to have separate units on the second floor and the third floor, but they're going to be townhouses side by side. Um, and I think that was also very favorably reviewed by HPC because it allows, um, kitchens on the second floor, you don't have to carry groceries to the third floor. And also, both of these units are going to have, um, uh, windows facing the back and enjoying that green space in the back. So the upper floor is the one that completely burnt and the one that we have to take off, as you saw in the engineering report at the beginning. So the re- So the reconstructed won't be one flat unit, but there will be a wall in the middle and two units on both sides. And then this is the roof plan and as per HPC comments to see if this is bubbled over here. This is the change that we've made from the previous meeting to add a gable. On the front of the building. And to go to the elevations, again, we did change the color so that there's not so much contrasting difference. One thing to note that not only was the building. Encroaching on the height to setback ratio, it was also too high compared to the height limit and we are now staying within the height limit.
Marina, while we're on this slide, well, it's very important to note that we are taking a non-compliant height building and bringing it down. To comply and that makes it a little bit more compliant from a height to setback ratio, which is. Hard to do with an existing building, but we're making both of those things either compliant or more compliant. But I think these drawings show what you you mentioned on the last slides, but one of the things that HPC really saw. And one of the, I think, the major internal upgrades or benefits to this plan, as I heard it. Is the creation of these two duplex units rather than a third floor unit that had an external. Third floor staircase. So could you could you walk the board through that change that, you know, basically results in not needing to have this. Third, you know, external staircase that we've been able to remove?
Yeah, so this right here is that staircase that used to be located on the back of the building that we think was added. It's not on the original sandborne maps and this portion right here, see an exact same location. That we're providing that to go back. So now. On the floor plan, so there will be a center kind of demising wall between the two units. And the residents would arrive on the second floor and enter units on both sides and they will have kitchen living spaces facing, I'm sorry, kitchen. Dining facing the back, living rooms facing the front. And as they continue upstairs, they will remain two bedrooms apartments, just like they were, but instead of. Having one on top of the other, they're side by side. Did I explain that?
I think so, yeah, and I I think when we get to see a picture of it in a slide or two, it'll it'll show as well. If not, we can go back to one, but I think that. External mass of of structure and be able to remove that is a a big plus.
Great. And then, oh, I forgot to mention the solar panels. So on the back of the building, we're planning to have solar panels. So again, based on the HPC comments, we added the gables on the porch and on the upper floor. And in the back, oh, okay, sorry, if this is what you were talking about, right? Okay, I apologize. I went back instead of forward. So we used to have the stair. On the back of the building, kind of going back and forth. While what we're proposing now is having windows facing towards the trees in the back. And creating kind of wonderful living space without loss of privacy of people walking in front of each other's windows.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, so. Here we go. We are going to go back to show what we think the exterior hopefully will look like. This is a 3D model. Let's see, and again, the colors are slightly different so that we show sort of the the new portion and then the existing portion of the building. And then. Ryan, you were going to say something about this.
Just go back one one slide, Marina. Just a few other items before we talk about the the variances a little bit more. Marina mentioned the revised trash location. I'll also note that there is a existing written agreement. For the, one of the other comments was a appears to be a. A driveway overlap or. You know, the meanders under the other property line and then we happy to provide afterwards, but there is a written agreement. For that. And then. Marina, now if you could talk about the the neighborhood a bit and and talk and summarize. The variances here.
Can I go to the next slide?
Yes, please. As a. As this is an existing building with a fire damaged third floor, so we're quite constrained. Most of the variances. That are here are existing ones. Or what I'd like to consider, hope you consider is de minimis changes. Largely due to the addition of the front porch. This is this. Photo overview is is meant to show. The the neighborhood and the scale and size of the homes. We we suggest to the board that by actually physically reducing the scale of the the physical size, bringing the roof down. And making it physically smaller, a building that already fit in with many large structures surrounding it actually would fit in. Even better, under this plan, we're bringing the roof down several feet. Which we believe assists in something that already fit in frankly, because it was there. Marina, if you want to go to the next slide. Here we tried a lot lot on one place here, but wanted to show. A a couple of things. First, on the upper right hand corner. That silhouette's the existing building. The red dash lines are the existing non-conforming height to setback. If you recall, this is a very small lot for the zone. You'll see in the in in both. This little chart here and in the engineering zoning memo, it's undersized already and that means that the existing. Building has setback and height to setback ratio issues. We can't change the location of the building, but we can bring the roof down. And so the the bottom silhouette shows the revised. Lower roof that is now conforming with height. We were able to cut several feet off of the building in doing this. And the variances unfortunately flow from that. So we are able to to. Remedy many of them. The height, the height to setback is is better now because the height is lower. But the rest kind of flows from the existing non-conforming lot situation. Remember, we're adding a front porch. Because this is not a one or two family home, it was already there as a three family, while I think. The neighborhood character ordinance and and HPC would agree with us that adding that covered front porch. Is appropriate for the neighborhood and is an upgrade and benefit to the project. There's no. That floor area counts. So unfortunately, of the about hundred forty nine square feet. Of floor area variance that we're technically talking about tonight. Almost half of it is is from that. The rest, as as you heard Marina talk earlier, is a function of reconfiguring the the third floor, then even with make bringing the roof down. Lower and and losing some space by reconfiguring it under the five foot rule, there are pieces of it that. Bring us into a a variance condition about a hundred square feet. We hope you see, agree with us, that is de minimis and that there by even physically. Shrinking the the actual bulk of the building and bringing it down and the other treatments that. It fits in to the neighborhood that it's already in frankly, even with the the larger size that it that it was prior to the fire and. Prior to this project. The existing front yard is unchanged. The existing parking is unchanged. The side yard conditions are unchanged. We're really keeping, you know, this is. Literally the restoration of a of a burnt building, but. With the ability with having unfortunately, almost any reconstruction of this of this building will have brought us back to this board. So the owners took it as an opportunity to upgrade those, the interior units and and the biggest. Benefit we see from that is the removal of that three story stair tower that would have allowed for the access to the existing, well, no longer existing because of fire damage. Third floor unit by bringing those down a level. We see a great benefit to the. Both to the neighborhood visually and to the type of units that these could be put back into service for 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 Princeton. We, by using the existing building, see no discernible negative impacts, but the use. And and upgrading of these units does, just, you know, for the record here, because we do have a a a floor area variance, we believe. Supports the the purposes of zoning here, A, C, D, and and J, and that's the character of the of the borough. That's the the type of housing and the mix of housing types that you can have. Supporting this apartment kind of buffer area between uses and then to preserve and enhance, and then we hope you agree with HPC, enhance the historic architecture. Of the community. I know there's a. Some of you have been ready to just pull the trigger. Last month, I know we had to come back and kind of explain things. I know there is a lot here and I I believe we short stepped. Because I don't know that Mr. Bridger or other than the brief comments we had from Elizabeth Kim. Last month got to say anything, but we would be more than happy to answer any questions that that they have or if they have any direct comments. We'd certainly yield to them as well.
And I apologize, Karen, I said it was twenty two slides and it's actually eighteen. I'm really.
Derek, do you think it's appropriate to read your memo again?
I don't think he ever read it.
Well, then it's appropriate to read it.
It's a high point. Thank you.
Derek, should I stop sharing with you or?
No, that's fine. As has been stated already, the the building is was fire damaged. Oh, just about a year ago. Plan is to reconstruct portions of the basement, first floor, second floor and demolish and add a third new floor. You've heard the extensive comments about that. There is a four. Area ratio. Requires forty five percent. The existing fifty eight percent. Proposed is sixty one percent. And. The board's familiar that this variance requires five affirmative votes. The applicant doesn't need to show that the site is uniquely cited or. To this structure, but that it can accommodate the additional FAR. And the there's six bulk variances. The first is for lot area requirements, nine thousand. Square feet, the existing seven thousand three hundred and thirty. The second is for the combined side yard requirement of thirty. The existing side yard. Combined side yard is nine feet, ten inches and and that's going to stay the same because really most of the activity is taking. Place on the third floor. The smaller side yard requirements fifteen, the existing three feet, five inches, and that's going to remain the same. The parking requirement is five spaces. There are three currently and that is what will be provided. The height to setback ratio does get. Better than it was before. The requirement's three to one, existing's twelve point four to one and the proposed is ten point nine five to one. In impervious coverage. There's a slight increase. The max permitted in this lot size is forty nine and a half percent, the existing. Sixty point one percent and the proposed is sixty point four percent and. That's due to the front porch and the the rear balcony and that may increase a bit because of the larger front porch. I'm just trying to skim over areas that aren't relative relevant, excuse me. In terms of. The lighting at the site, the applicants provide details. That the proposed exterior lighting. Does. Conform with the trespass requirements of section B seventeen A three sixty five point one. We did ask that the applicant address the driveway encroachment on the. The neighboring property. We requested an easement agreement if the there is an encroachment onto the neighboring property. So. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And the other. Concern we had was there have been some bicycle. Electric bike charging fires. We believe that the technology has been changed on the chargers, but. We wanted this reviewed by the fire official and to be equipped with the appropriate smoke alarms and fire suppression equipment. We did ask and the applicant. Has moved the trash. We asked that the. Waste and recycling be moved to a spot that was not so close to any neighboring property. And then we just wanted to make sure that the. The trash collection containers and the recycling containers were adequate for the for the house. We would want to, excuse me, see. Details of the solar panels that are on the rear portion of the roof for review. By the zoning officer. And then the other comments were that the. Applicants engineer shall submit a cost construction estimate for the installation of all site improvements, which will be reviewed by Princeton's land use engineer. In order to determine the amount required for inspection fees. And there may be approvals from the Mercer County Planning Board, Delaware. Raritan Canal Commission and the Princeton Sewer Department. So that's a quick overview of the memo. If you have any questions, glad to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kim, do you want to summarize your memo too? I don't believe you did that the last time.
Sure.
Thank you.
So obviously this memo is in accordance to the first design that was done by the applicant. The HPC was unanimous and. Recognizing that. The new exterior reconstruction was going to be quite different from the other properties within that neighborhood and specifically. Adjacent to the property, they felt that the existing. Cross gable roof, which was very steep pitched, was a defining feature within that. Building and was commonly found within that neighborhood. And they 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 did question why the. First and second floor windows are being replaced with twin windows and removal of the shutters when there was no. Damage to those and also that the clapboard was going to be removed with stucco. Their recommendations were that a gate, as Marina had talked about, that they felt that a gable roof somewhere on the house. Was appropriate to be. Redesigned in the reconstruction of the house, whether it be the the top and or the porch. And they also felt that the color scheme was too much of a contrast and that the the color scheme should be more. Not such a great contrast and they felt that the third floor windows did not relate well to the rest of the windows on the house. And with that said. I guess maybe I shouldn't talk about the new design yet, right? That was just the report. So that was it.
But just to quickly summarize and thank you for, I forgot to mention that we did revise the windows on the top floor. To relate to the lower floors as per HPC's comments.
Okay. Board members, do you have any question of the architect?
I have a couple of questions. One, are you gonna? Are you gonna gut this or are you gonna tear it down and start over?
The interior finishes have been removed because there was a lot of fire damage and water damage. The top floor, the roof shape needs to be removed. The first floor and the second floor are staying. And the basement obviously is staying. So the top floor does need to be removed, as you saw in those pictures, there it's completely burned on the inside. But the first and the second floor were mostly water damage.
Thank you. Is this a rental or a condo?
Both. It is a condo legal. Ryan, can you explain that?
I will try. It is, it was condo minimized into three units. It's actually owned by two sets of people that are collectively. Working on the application together and on behalf of the association. But ultimately, while it's owned by two different people, they are two different groups of people, they are rental units.
Thank you. And thoroughly, is there anything you can do about the parking with just the three spots back there? And where would where would people park if they had two cars?
Unfortunately, the the site is as has been for, you know, since it became a three unit building, probably decades ago, has. Been constrained like this. It is it is woefully undersized for the the. Probably decades ago has, um, been constrained like this. It is, it is woefully undersized, uh, for the, the. Zone. Um, there, we could show the site plan back up again. Uh, there's really not room though, unfortunately for other. Um, other spaces back there. It does manage to comply, um, with, uh, uh, the amount of open space that, uh, the, the zoning requires. It likely wouldn't if we had any more parking, but, uh, it would certainly come at the expense of, of coverage, um, and, and impervious, uh, that, uh, uh, again, it's already non-compliant as it is with that, um, with, with only the, the three spots.
Okay, thank you. I happen to like the design. I particularly like the design in the back. Uh, it's not facing somewhere where you can see it, but I understand why it isn't. I'm also curious why on the first floor you put both bedrooms in the front of the house instead of the back, just architecturally, I, I, it has nothing to do with zoning. Just curious.
Uh, well, that's a good question. We did have multiple options that we presented, um, to our clients. Uh, so the ground floor unit is owned by a separate entity and we worked with individual. Unit owners and we presented them with options of having two bedrooms in the front or sort of along the way having, um, living, you know, living space on one side and bedroom on the other side. And I think the choice was, I'm not going to. Know for sure, but I think it's a combination of southern light in the back being kind of exciting for the living spaces. And also the fact that, um, the fact that the rear is shared space and on the ground floor, they didn't feel that that would be sort of, you know, if people are having barbecues back there, they didn't want that to be in front of somebody's window. But we did present multiple options and that was the chosen one.
And that's an acceptable architectural feature to put bedrooms on the front of the house on the first floor like that. There is, there's no, there's no. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sitting here. It's actually my bedroom and office, but it is facing the street right here, right now. So.
On the first floor?
On the first floor. Yeah, overlooking Corey Street right here.
Right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And thank you for the compliment.
Um, just a question, um, why the additional FAR? Why the variance?
Well, um, much of it is from, uh, is a function of the front porch. So, uh, the, the, we, we could, yes, that is correct. That is correct. Um, the, the rest is just a result of, of reconfiguring the space that was already there. Um, uh, as, as we heard that the, um, under the seven foot rules that was. In place right when we were, you know, when this burnt down and right when it started, um, this would not have added any, uh, floor area. Um, uh, it was a function of being able to reconfigure that third floor. In a way that both brought it down, um, but had some usable space up there. Um, I, I, uh, Marina, to her credit, uh, I, I think was able to, um, achieve both of those objectives of having it feel physically smaller and, and bring it down. Um, but it, it came at the expense of, you know, uh, uh, clipping some of those corners, uh, and, uh, you know, a hundred feet is, uh, it's, it's not nothing, but, uh, that, that's where the, the trade-off was.
No, I mean, uh, obviously it's, it's minimal, but the, the allowable in the area is forty-five percent. And, and the other, the other question I have is, I assume that the spiral stair in the back is not a, a fire stair.
Correct.
It's just a decorative stair.
For, uh, yeah, for the balconies in case people would like to come down from the balcony.
Sure. Okay.
Absolutely.
That was it. Thank you. And I do like, this is, I do like this modification to the design. Uh, as opposed to the first one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Board members, any other comments? Mr. Kennedy, do you have any other witnesses?
Uh, I, I don't, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um. If some of the board members have any comments and Mr. Kennedy is done, uh, we'll go into, we'll open this to the public, but, uh, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to say anything before we do that?
Sorry, could I ask one more thing that I, I just, I was muted, so I didn't quite jump in quick enough. Um, I, I was, I didn't notice last time about the increase in the impervious coverage and I just wondered what kind of. Uh, compensation or. You've made in terms of, you know, I don't know what the flood. Issues are in that neighborhood, um, but that I always, that seemed like a significant change, not a one or two percent. So.
But, uh, uh, un- unfortunately, because of the, the size of the lot, even a, a, a small change appears big. It is, the, the impervious coverage is. Twenty-five square feet, which is the, like the little bump outs on either side of the front porch. Um, uh, it, it's well below the. Um, the requirement, um, you know, for, for mitigation, and I'm not sure if there's any, you know, place frankly on the site that what, that would. You know, make sense for something small, um, uh, but it's, it's, that's the trade-off unfortunately, both on floor area and, um, and coverage for that addition of that porch to the existing structure. Otherwise the site is, is unchanged. Um, I'm, I'm sure the applicants, you know, um, would a, as part of restoring the landscaping would. Uh, be sure to use things that are, uh, appropriate, um, uh, from a, um, uh, a native plant and, and, and things that would help, um, uh, with stormwater, but without it, uh, becoming something that they'd have to submit through, through engineering. Um, but it, it is about twenty-five square feet though, is, is what that changes.
Right. And percentage wise, it's point three percent.
I, maybe I didn't hear it correctly then the first time. I thought I had heard it went from fifty-one percent to sixty.
That's the FAR.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I had thought. Okay, so I.
And, and that one is unfortunately a function of the denominator being so off for the zone.
Thanks.
Yeah, but thank you. Good question.
All right, um, anyone else like to comment before we go into the public portion of the meeting?
Yeah, just, um. Unless I missed it, do you have any comments regarding the driveway and the encroachment that Mr. Bridger had?
Oh, uh, uh, apologies. I, I, I tried to knock that out earlier. We, we do have a, uh, it's something that was addressed with the neighboring owners, uh, years ago with the prior owner. We have a, a written agreement with them. So we're happy to provide that to, to staff to, to their satisfaction.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll open this up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. Okay. Give it a second here. If anyone pipes in. All right, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Uh, again, Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session.
Uh, thank you, uh, all of you. Um, I'll, I'll be, be quick and also want to particularly thank. Um, those of you who were here last month to stay up late to let us have that few extra minutes. To see if that we were close and to, to read the room. You know, this is a, um, a building that, uh, unfortunately, this is a, a tragedy that there was a fire. Um, it's, it takes a long time, uh, to, to get to this point, both with design and the, the planning and zoning process, and it would have been a similar amount of time, frankly. Um, just to, to rebuild it. So we're, we're glad that one that you stayed up with us last time, uh, the staff and, and HPC in particular for helping us. Get to something that I think we all feel, um, uh, fits the neighborhood and is an improvement and turning a, um, an unfortunate situation into something that's going to result in. Uh, a, a better appearing, a bit more useful. Um, reuse of the fire damaged structure. So again, thank you all for hearing us tonight. Uh, we hope you agree that the, um, uh, the combination of the reduction and removal of existing non-conformities, uh, with the minor, um, uh, nature of the, uh, uh, floor area and coverage variance. Um, when balanced, uh, um, uh, with the, the, the purposes of zoning that I mentioned earlier, that this, uh, benefits. Uh, uh, meets, meets the muster here tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, we're going to executive session now. Board members, would someone like to, but does anybody have any questions or would like to discuss this? Anyone? All right, well, I'll, I'll start. I, um, I, at first, when I looked at it, I was a little concerned about the increase in the floor area ratio, and I understand. How the calculation was done. And so this, uh, even though that stair is a, a part of the building, it's considered. Impervious coverage because of the roof. So the increase that hundred and. Two square feet, which is in the building, uh, is truly de minimis. Um, I think removal of the stair is a definite improvement. It's not necessary anymore with this. And, uh, I actually think that, um, I think this will be, uh, I think this will be a very nice addition.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well. I think, I think it looks nice. I mean, it fits in to the neighborhood well. I think it adds a little bit of, uh, the, the design kicks things up a little bit, a little more contemporary. Bit, which I think is actually positive and, um, uh, I think, yeah, the, the front porch actually is kind of necessary to actually for scale as well. So a little bit of square footage there, I think is certainly warranted as well. If you convince the neighbor on the corner to put that wraparound fortune and then one, that would be really nice. That was nice. Um, all right, any, uh, any else, anyone else like to make any comments or if not, if someone would like to make a motion?
I, I think there are a lot of really nice improvements, including, um, it, I think it's in the, in the rear. View of the trees, you know, that, that seems like a really, um, thoughtful. Um, improvement. I, I agree with everything that everyone said about. About how it, it seems unfortunate that there was a fire, but from that it seems like building is going to be a better one.
Motion, anyone? Motion to accept. Thank you.
I'll second. Well, question, are there any conditions to this motion? There is Mr. Bridger's review memo. It's memo he prepared with Mr. Weissman. There are comments, recommendations. And in addition, particularly with respect to the driveway easement. I believe the applicant has indicated that they would provide a copy of the written agreement to the staff. For their review and approval. Is that correct, Mr. Kennedy?
That's right.
Okay, so that would also be, so the question is, does the board want Mr. Bridger's comments? And recommendations as well as this condition on the property, do you want that to be part of the motion? And then also, there is the HPC, uh, chair memo. I don't know if all of it has been addressed by the revisions the applicant made. So I'm asking about that too, if you want that to be a condition of approval as well.
I do have one question. Um, does this, Karen, this might be for you, does this easement for the driveway need to be recorded?
I. I would think that it would be recorded as a protection to, um, the parties to the agreement. Um, I'm also assuming in the, I believe staff normally would like easements to be recorded. Is that correct there?
Yes, Karen.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll just beg for some leniency there. Um, the, the current agreement is not recorded, um, and we, we, we'd love to. Do that and perhaps we'll be able to do that, but, uh, I would just hate for something like that to hold up reconstructing the, um, the building.
All right, so Mr. Kennedy is indicating he doesn't want the recording of it to be a condition. That's correct, Mr. Kennedy?
That's correct.
Or you agree to do it.
Well, if they agree to do it, then it's a condition.
Well, I mean, well, can we give him, can we give him a period of time to do it?
Well, the, 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 certainly we have no problem doing it. It's just, we'd have to, um, confirm, you know, that, that, uh, the other party, you know, the neighboring parties would, would, would allow. That, um, certainly would be helpful to us to, to do that. I just don't want to necessarily promise something that, uh, you know, is controlled by a non-client of mine, uh, and have that keep the roof from being put back on the, the fire damaged building. That, that's all.
Okay, well, it's.
What is, what is the term of the existing agreement?
Uh, it's, uh, 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 indefinite essentially, yeah. But it just, it doesn't, it, it's not recorded and doesn't, um, I'll, you know, it's not, uh, it was done years ago and it just wasn't allowed to be, uh, wasn't meant, it wasn't recordable or, or meant to be recorded.
So indefinite meaning it doesn't have a termination date?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Now, I, I'm sure there's something, and I, I think what I just suggested would violate the statute of, uh, the, uh, uh, rule against perpetuities in New Jersey. So something. Close to that, but it wasn't, uh, it wasn't a term of years, you know, didn't end after ten years or something like that.
Okay.
There are exit clause that either party can exercise?
Uh, I'll, I'll be honest, I'd have to, I'd have to pull it up to, to, to see. I, I, I hope not from, for, for our client's sake, because it's, it's there and I prefer not to get into a. You know, if it's a, an adverse possession thing or, or, you know, uh, um, uh, but, um, I'm, I'm hoping that it doesn't when I, when I relook at it.
Are you comfortable with that, Derek?
I mean, when we first looked at this, it's, that jumped right out at us. It's like, it's too narrow to get a, a vehicle through there. So, um, I just want to be sure that in five years that we don't. Have an, a new owner at the adjoining property that won't let these people get into the back of their parking spaces.
Karen, do you think it's something you need to look at?
I mean, it sounds to me like the bigger issue may be if it's not in the recordable form. I don't know how old it is. So, uh, if it's given to staff for review and approval. And there, you know, any comments about descriptions or something, then I'm not sure, um, where, where that takes us in terms of, um, the project. I'm less concerned about looking at it myself and more concerned about, um, you know, can it be recorded and. If not, then I guess staff would need to maintain a copy within, I guess, the building permit file and other places so that if there's a question later. You'd be able to. You know, advise a new owner or an adjacent owner, oh no, you know, we, we didn't issue the permit, um, without evidence of an easement.
I agree.
Michael. Michael, please.
I guess, you know. At, at worst, we would condition and we have in the past to the satisfaction of staff. But we already know that staff's not satisfied with it. So. You know, you gotta come up with something diff.
No, no argument here. I, I just, it's, it's, this is the existing condition of a three unit building. Um, so I, and I, I don't mean to say it is what it is, but, uh, um, the, the, uh, the arrangement for the use of the driveway. Um, and the encroachment, uh, exists in the, you know, the current. Condition, which is not being changed or exasperated. Um, so certainly happy to, you know, a, a condition where we work with it. I just want to, I'm just being extra cautious not to agree to. Something specific that I won't be able to deliver, um, and then we'll be stuck with a, a building with its roof open for, uh, you know, inde- indefinitely. Now that, that's, that's my only concern. Uh, we'll certainly work diligently to, to, to get this and get something recordable. It is a condominium, so we're able to. You know, adjust the, the master deed perhaps with some kind of note to. Alert future owners of the existence of the agreement. For example, that's something that's completely in our control. I just don't, I, I. Uh, knowing what I know of the existing document, it's just not, wasn't done with one that could be, that could be recorded and we'll, we'll have to get their, um, neighboring, um, owners, uh, agreement to. To do that. And I, again, I'm just loathe to allow that to hold up putting a roof back on a fire damaged building.
I, I understand that, but neither. I, I understand that, but neither Mr. Bridger or Ms. Casey are really in agreement with this and, uh, for valid reasons.
Then, then, you know, I, I, I can't stop you from, from putting, um, conditions on it. I can, I can tell you the, the reality of, of what we have and, uh, what the existing arrangement is.
No, I understand that, but it's to your benefit to resolve it too.
I certainly agree.
I, I can't support it without it being resolved.
So we should make it a condition then? Jim, you made the motion? Yeah. Do you want to include that as a condition? Yes, please.
So that, that and the comments, recommendations and any, yeah, comments and recommendations for Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman in their memo? Is that right, Jim? That would be part of your motion?
That would be part of the motion.
And then the HPC memo, again, as like, uh, had said previously, it, it may be that the applicant has in fact met all those comments. I'm not sure. So is, is that a condition of approval or not?
What do you have, Elizabeth?
Yes, um, I believe there were three recommendations that HPC made, and I feel that the revised design has addressed those three and that HPC, um, would be satisfied and especially thankful that the applicant heard, uh, what their concerns for, and they made these changes to the design. And that's much appreciated. Thank you.
So it, so it doesn't have to be, it does not have to be included.
Right. Yes, I believe that.
Are we saying as far as the parking and the drive that we, we were asking to have a very clear agreement from the neighboring property that that would be, um, always honored that it could be, I, that the way it is now would continue as it is in the future? Is that what we, that what we're asking Mr. Kennedy to?
Effectively, I believe it is.
My understanding is that what you're asking in Mr. Bridger in his memo, it's paragraph at, on, maybe four. And staff comment applicant should address driveway encroachment upon neighboring property and enter into an easement agreement if any of the portion of the driveway extends beyond the property line. My understanding is that's a condition, what's being added to it is the applicant will provide a copy of the existing written agreement to staff for review and approval and recording. So that's what I understand the board is asking for. Is everybody in agreement or do we still have questions on that?
I, I'm just curious, I'm not an attorney. Does it need to be recorded to be enforceable?
No, that, no, I think the recording is really a matter of putting on notice uh, everybody who's a party to it and future purchasers, I guess also for the municipality, um, that that, that answers a question that could come up in the future in terms of, well, why did you give the building permit or why'd you give zoning permit if there was this encroach? But why didn't you do anything about it? And I'll, I'll leave it to Derek if there's other concerns he has about why.
No, I mean, I, I guess if I could, I've seen the document before, I just feel like I'm walking into, uh, you know, I don't know what I'm walking into. Cause I don't know what the agreement says, so. If it's enforceable, um, I don't know if, if Karen, if you and Dan and I want to look at it, and make a determination, but you know, I'm not an attorney. I don't know if it's, it's enforceable going forward.
I think we're hearing from Mr. Kennedy that he's got his own concerns about whether it's in a recordable format right now. So.
It's, it's 100% not, I can tell you.
There we go. So this, this would mean that, okay, so this means the applicant would need to kind of recast the easement agreement and would need the neighbor to sign it. Say, well, here it is, here's the, here, here's a, a recordable version of it and you need to sign it. So Mr. Kennedy is expressing some concern that maybe the neighbor won't want to do that. Um, Derek, just a question for you. Um, Mr. Kennedy is arguing, you know, this is an existing situation. So, and this is the way it's been. From your perspective, because they need variance relief and a building permit, I mean, they are, they are, there was a fire. From your perspective, and I guess from construction, this is still a project that needs a whole set of approvals, right?
Needs building permit.
Right.
Yeah.
And a zoning permit.
Right.
What's the current width of the driveway at the pinch point now? I can't read the survey. It's blurry. Eight point three feet or six point?
I will pull it up. Hold on one second.
Can you share it with us too?
Yep, yep. I'm trying to get my CAD file open. Sorry. Keep, keep talking. I'm, I'm opening.
I mean, another possibility, I suppose. I, I don't know. Do, do you want to carry this next month to allow everybody look at the easement? And then maybe we can, maybe there's a way around it so that.
But what, I, I am curious, not to get dramatic, but what, what would, what if that's not possible? Does the house, do we, does that lead to leaving it in place with the top burned off or tearing the whole thing down? I mean, what, what's the, maybe that's not our problem, but it, it strikes me that there are, not that it's a good thing, but I, I feel like in my experience here, there've been lots of situations like this where there's like kind of an informal agreement that almost like you don't want to poke the bear because it get, you know, that, oh, sometimes it's better to leave it alone is a little bit what I feel I'm hearing, but I know that's not, that's not an easy thing to live with if you're the person who works for the town and, um, is really responsible for enforcement or dealing with disputes, but it, it just strikes me that I don't, I guess that's what it worries I.
Now, if you're correct, if it was a condition, it would be something that needed to be complied with before zoning and engineering can sign off and get a building permit. That's why I'm interested in hearing what the existing driveway.
It looks like six point three to me.
Yeah, I pulled it up. I can share my screen. It is six point three. There we are.
Yeah, it's six point, it's six point three.
Right. And it says zero point seven over the line right here. So we're, we're talking less than a foot.
Yeah.
How wide's, how wide are cars these days? I don't even know.
Well, somebody, if the, if, in the extreme, if the neighbor next door chose to put a fence on the property line, you probably couldn't get a car through there with mirrors on it or an SUV or something. It would be limiting.
Question for you, Derek. If that happened, maybe not this owner, but a, a future owner or something decided to do that, would that not be the problem of the applicant or future owners? Would that be the town's problem? If they provide an easement agreement, apparently there's something in writing, assume it's signed by the parties, it's an agreement. Um, if, if one party then reneges or said, I didn't know, I'm putting a fence up, um, is that, is that the town's issue? Wouldn't that be the applicant's issue? I mean, you were given, you're given a copy of a written agreement.
I just would like to see the agreement. I mean, that's, that's what gives me pause. It's been in our memo for, you know, a while and, uh.
But it's, as you mentioned, Karen, you know, and somebody would come back to the town and say, well, you approved this. You know, you, you approved this knowing this easement, the nature of the easement. So we really need, if somebody needs to review, the staff needs to review it and be comfortable with it.
I mean, I think, I don't want to waste another month, but it might be worthwhile looking at the easement. And otherwise, if there's a problem and you have to come back, you're even further behind. But that's just a suggestion.
Your suggestion is to carry it to next month?
And even if, if Ryan's happy to share the easement, I mean, or the agreement so that we can see what Rick, you know, rights it grants or what rights it doesn't grant, how it's going to be distinguished.
It's, it's a license agreement. And so there's a written agreement between prior owners. Uh, it's likely also a, um, uh, a, a vested right from, at which I'd prefer not to detail on a public record, but, uh, it, it's likely a, a right these owners also have, um, through other long-term, open and notorious use, uh, with, with apologies that, uh, you know, it's, yes, it's been in the memo, but as a existing non-conforming, uh, as existing condition, you know, since this was whatever approved or built decades ago, it was, was not necessarily a focus beyond there's permission, you know, to, for it to exist that way. So, um, I, I, I'm, I'm certainly open to whatever combination of things will allow us to go back and, and repair the fire damage. Um, we will certainly do our best to, 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 you know, um, strengthen or, 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 um, or make recordable or attempt to, I, I, I don't want to venture what situation we'll all get into if, you know, if we can't deliver that, you know, I don't know if that's the, the, the town.
I, I have a suggestion because if it's a license, that, that certainly is revocable. So that, that's not an easement. License means the party granting it can revoke it as they wish. Um, and we don't know what's in it, so we don't know if there's, you know, some time period to it. What if Derek, you need to say if you're comfortable with this, what if the resolution indicates that? That the applicant represents, they have a written license agreement with the neighbor for this driveway encroachment. Um, and, uh, you know, if it's revoked, then, I mean, meaning what I'm trying to do is build in something that indicates this is the applicant's issue. It's not our issue. So if they can't get into their driveway one day, or they sell one of the condo units and the new owner says, I thought I could park this, but there's a fence. What's going on?
Could I ask you a question about that in terms of the applicant's responsibility? I, I mean, and I'm picking up on something, um, that our chairman said, could this not be solved by simply saying, okay, you're not going to get an SUV there? You need a smaller car. It's up to you. If you want to get in the back, buy a small car. Doesn't involve the town.
Unless somebody comes back and said, you reviewed this, you discussed it, you were not comfortable with it, but you approved it.
And we, perhaps we said and we approved it, if you want, if you want to get back there, buy a small car.
I mean, I, I'll acknowledge that ordinarily you might not have in a resolution language that says, you know, that there will be a, a way to phrase it, but basically this is on the app.
Yeah.
They're content with a license. Okay, fine. If it's revoked, then this, this was made clear in the approval and that, um, this is not the zoning officer, this is not the construction official, it's not their responsibility.
Karen, I'd almost suggest similar to what an applicant would if we were proceeding prior to having a resolution or, or an appeal expiring almost. It's a, it's a release of the town, um, uh, similar to that situation. And I think that's a good way to look at it.
Eric, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I would be. I mean, uh, six foot, six foot three is not adequate, um, driveway to, even for a regular, even for a small car, you know? Um, and it's unrealistic to have people put their windows or their mirrors in. It's realistic to think that people were going to drive onto the adjoining property to get around the back of the house. But having said that, it's been there for, it appears to be there since the house was built. Um, and there were probably horses and, but I don't want to, I don't want it to come back to, uh, the town. So if the applicant wants to take complete ownership for that, and if they can't get back there, then they're still parking on site. So they probably have to purchase parking somewhere and they wouldn't be eligible for a permit because it's of their own doing. So I think I could be supportive of something like that.
All right. And if the resolution indicated that if, you know, if that license agreement is revoked, then the applicants, um, they wouldn't be eligible. So there would be no parking on site then, Brett?
Right.
Okay. Well. That worked for you, Mr. Kennedy?
I, I think it's the, the, unfortunately, the only option we have. And, and having said that, we'll, we'll certainly do everything we can and likely be able to satisfy anyway, um, you know, and obviously it's in everyone's interest, including the, the owners to, to codify that in a, in a way that satisfies everyone. Um, so we'll be, we'll be doing.
Well, but I mean, from, from, from the board's perspective and the council, the zoning officer's perspective, I guess what we would then say is the applicant's going to provide a copy of their written license agreement uh, to allow the driveway encroachment upon the neighboring property. You know, that, well, I, I will, I will have to work on this language, which will be forwarded to Mr. Kennedy and then also to the board and Mr. Bridger. But what we're trying to make clear is that if it's revoked or challenged or something, then, uh, this will be the applicant's responsibility. If they can't park on site, then they can't park.
For your information, Google says the average car size is five, width is five point six to six point two inches. I don't know if that's with or without mirrors, but.
Without mirrors.
I think it's usually without, but.
How, how close is the neighboring properties building, the edge?
I, I believe Marina's sight plane shows that, but it, you know, it, with the setback, it would be quite a bit away. I think the concern would probably be that someone would put a fence there.
Yeah, it doesn't, well.
Their neighborhood picture or over like the Google Earth?
Yeah, that was one. I think slide seventeen, if you have the, or.
I may try to get to that. Hold on one second.
Hopefully I, I rotated it the right way.
Jim, is all this acceptable to you? Yeah. Okay. Right situation, but I think this is the best path forward.
Yeah. Am I, can everybody see?
Yeah.
Right. It's, it's a comfortable distance.
Yeah. Yes, more than the driveway, yeah. Yeah.
Need a foot or two. So I, I mean, I'm comfortable. I think the way it's moved that along, um, that the town's not on the hook for it. So.
So hasn't been moved yet.
All right. So everyone is in agreement then that we're not trying to have staff, uh, a, a copy will be given to them. And are we saying for their review and approval? Because what we seem to be saying is that.
A review.
A review, not approval.
All right.
But do we want to spell, uh, uh, Karen, are you going to spell out in the resolution the implication of the revocation of the license?
Yeah, that's why I said I have to just give this a little bit of thought in terms of how it would be worth it, but that would be the idea. Yes.
Okay.
That it's pre-existing and, uh, there's a fire, it has to be, you know, it has to. There's a fire, it has to be, you know, has to, has to be reconstructed. And if the licenses revoked, then. Applicant will have to figure out something else. How to park or whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. We had, did we have a second?
But yeah.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion before we vote? Karen, you're comfortable? Do you? Got everything?
Uh, yes. Yeah, no problem.
Derek, you're okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, Claudia, can you call roll through?
I guess you asked me, yes.
David?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Sherman Cohen?
Yes.
Okay. I know you look relieved.
And, and I actually appreciate that as a, quite a, an elegant solution for a, a, an existing problem. So I, I much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks Karen for helping us and Derek.
Okay. Anybody need any time before we go to the next hearing? Okay. All right, um. Thank you all. All right, our next hearing is case number Z twenty-two dash two seventy-nine. Thirty-three Lee Avenue, block sixty-nine oh five, lot thirty-three. In the R nine zone in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. Claudia, Claudia, Karen, or the uh.
Yes, the notice thing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bridger, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, thirty-three Lee Avenue is owned by Sabrina King and Abel Smith. They're seeking a four-area ratio, permit the expansion of the attic. Additional setback variances are requested for side yard and combined side yard setbacks. Properties located in the R nine district in the former Princeton township, the existing single-family use is permitted as a right. Um, the subject lot is not complying with regard to the sixty-five hundred square foot lot requirement, the existing's three thousand. Square feet. It's not complying with regard to the forty-foot requirement for lot frontage and lot um, width, the existing's thirty feet. Then the subject property itself uh, is not complying with respect to the smaller side yard uh, setback requirement of five feet. The existing is point three-three feet to the overhang. And the combined side yard setback requirement fifteen, it's not complying, it's seven point seven-nine feet to the. Overhang and it's also not compliant with the existing four-area ratio, which is fifty-three point nine, the existing is fifty-three point two. Subject properties located in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, um. Elizabeth here, she will uh, share a report with the board. Um, applicant is proposing to expand the existing attic by constructing dormers on each side of the gable roof. The existing front dormer will remain, the expanded attic will serve as the master bedroom and bath balcony is proposed off the rear. Of the attic, the existing first floor rear addition will be reconstructed and slightly expanded. Out to the existing wall of the first floor and the um, attic addition and slight expansion of the rear. Addition require an FAR variance. Um, as I stated earlier, existing FAR is fifty-three point. Two-nine, um, the proposed is sixty point three-two. Um. It's a D variance, as we discussed earlier. Lot doesn't need to be uniquely suited, but it should be able to handle the additional FAR um. And the, the bulk variances by the addition of the dormer, it's considered an increase in the existing degree of non-compliance and. Um, the smaller side yard setback requirement is five and the proposed is point three-three. Feet and then the combined side yard requirement fifteen and the proposed is seven point seven-nine and they've requested uh. Consideration under the C two criteria. I'm glad to answer any questions you have. If uh, not, I see Elizabeth is ready with her memo.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Bridger? Uh, Elizabeth, can you summarize your memo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so the HPC has seen a lot of applications for additions within the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. And um, they couldn't have been happier with this application. They felt they did everything right. They came in for a concept review. They heard um, comments that HPC had made about detail. And important features of the house, which the applicant had incorporated into their final design. And they um, felt that the um, the final product um, was very sensitive. To um, preserving the historic house and the streetscape. And that the improvements that they made, which were behind the front of the house, so it was able to maintain the um. The, the, the front gable and the small dormer, which is a defining feature to them. Um, they felt was um, very sensitively done. And the addition very compatible to this district. So they couldn't have said, you know. More great things about this project and they fully endorse this application to your board.
Thank you. Okay, um, who will represent this project?
Miss Kennedy? That's me again. Um, uh, if, if, uh, Claudia, if you could move uh, Abe Smith over, uh, he's the uh. Homeowner applicant. Um, and while that's happening, uh, I'll just. Um, thank the board again and particularly HPC. Um, I'm lucky occasionally to have a. Um, uh, applicants like Mr. Smith, who is a, uh, not only a, a, a talented. Um, restoration expert frankly, but he's my source for exotic uh, woods uh, and as an amateur woodworker. So uh, I was very pleased to get to work with him uh, professionally on, on his home here. Um, but a, as Elizabeth said, um, this is a woefully undersized lot. You'll see. Um, all of the um, lots in, in this part of the neighborhood, this part of Witherspoon Jackson are less than half. Their required size. Uh, here an applicant in, in making a very modest home. Um, uh, more usable for his growing family has essentially tucked. The entirety of, of a hundred eighty-nine square feet uh, under two shed dormers that are kind of hidden behind. Uh, of the front of this home. I, I, I think you'll see and I hope you'll agree as HPC did that they did it amazingly. Tastefully and, and you'll also hear um, all of the, the um, the, perhaps in less detail than HPC did. Um, uh, a wonderful story of restoring everything from the box gutters to the front um. Uh, balustrade details um, that are going to get painstakingly restored. Um, uh. Missed, with, with, with that, um, I, I'd like to introduce um, um. Abel Smith, if you want to, um, uh, first, I'll ask if you could be um, sworn in and I don't know if it's. With timing wise, if it's, if it's just yourself uh, tonight, uh, or, or uh, if we'll have uh, your, your, your wife as well.
Yeah, Sabrina is going to join us in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith, if you'd like to begin, let me just swear you in. Uh, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, I know you've, you've lived and owned in this house, Mr. Smith, for, for. Uh, for some time, but if you want to give us just a, the, the board's a brief uh, um. Benefit of, of your background and connection to, to the um, uh, to Princeton.
Yeah, so um, you know, my wife and I bought the house in twenty thirteen. Um, you know, I own a, a company here, uh, as Ryan said. It's a, you know, wood, a wood business. We basically take storm damaged uh, trees and turn them into kiln-dried lumber. And sort of sell them to cabinet makers and furniture makers. Uh, I also have a, a building company called Tay River Builders. Uh, you know, we do a lot of sort of projects in the area. Uh, sort of mid-size addition renovation things and we also insulate houses and my wife, who had to go upstairs with the kids for a minute. Uh, her name is Sabrina King and she's the uh, woman's volleyball coach at the university here. And we lived in the area for, you know, both of us have lived in the area for twenty, twenty-five, almost twenty-five years. Um, so, you know, we bought this house and we have kind of an expanding family. We have two young daughters and. We started exploring a couple of years ago, um, renovating the house to suit our growing family and. You know, one of the things we thought of immediately was to uh, add floor area to the attic. Um, and I know there's a lot of obstacles to that, you know, particularly in this district with all the kind of non-conforming. Properties, you know, that exist on, on the site, so. Um, we started designing a, an attic renovation that um, was basically conforming, you know, there was, there was no added FAR in the original plan. Because back then there was the kind of seven-foot uh, FAR exemption in the attic. And we managed to get it all up there, you know, in our sort of attic exemption shell. And so that kind of changed uh, partway through, so that. Uh, require, you know, sort of put us in the requirement for this uh, FAR variance. And the house is, you know, I think Ryan probably wants to talk about this a little bit, but you know, the house is non-conforming in many ways. Um, m- mostly because, you know, zoning obviously got overlaid on the house after it was built, so. Um, this is Sabrina King, by the way, and you know, you can swear her in if you want. I think she's.
Yes, I need to do that. Would you raise your right hand? I swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you guys. Um, uh, a- as we had with our other um, applications, uh, we'll have one. Uh, slide, uh, slide deck, I'll, I'd like to have that marked uh, as our one exhibit tonight. Um. And if I could. Share my.
There are, Mr. Kennedy?
I uh, foolishly um, switched it so that I, I, the sorter view would uh, would, would disappear. So give me one second, I can. Confirm that. Um, I'm gonna have to unshare my screen though to do it. Uh, there's thirteen slides, including the one that says, thank you.
Thank you.
The most important one of all. So with, with apologies over jarring your screens again, I'm gonna uh, reshare my screen. Um, and uh, uh, Abel will, will walk the, the, the board through the um, both the location and. And uh, where you are in the, the, you know, your, your lot situation. So o- o- on the left here, I guess that's the. The zoning map and showing where your, your house is in the, the red circle.
Correct.
And uh, on the right, that's your block and uh, you know, that's, that's your lot in the circle, but you had mentioned this and I did to begin with. It sure looks like all the lots on your block are about the same size. Um, and uh, I'll note that that is less than half. Uh, your lot is three thousand square feet, is that right? And, and the requirement is sixty-five hundred square feet, so.
That's correct, yeah, three thousand, yeah.
Uh, uh, unfortunately, they're less than, than half and that, that is par for the course. Uh. Uh, moving to the next slide here, um, that's your, your home uh, with the, the blue outline?
Yes.
Uh, next here, what, tell me what we're, uh, we're looking at here, the front and kind of a side view?
Yeah, it's just, I sort of came around and did three shots at one point in the house, but I wanted to kind of show the. Uh, side elevation so that we could start to understand kind of the implication of the dormer on the, you know, on the pedestrian experience. My garden needed weeding that day. We have a little vegetable garden in the front.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll show some, some other elevations, but, but from the street view though, the, the side dormers probably won't even be visible from, from these views. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, from the street, um, I think the dormers are back, you know, about fifteen feet. So it's a little bit hard, it would be hard to see them in the street. I think if you backed up onto the part, end of the local Greek parking lot. Uh, there's a hill there, so as you get further back, if you're in the parking lot, you might be able to see those dormers, but I think that would be fairly hard to detect. From the front elevation and as you go around the side, obviously you'd be able to see them a little bit.
So uh, so on the left is the current elevation and the right is your proposed with the two um, shed dormers?
Yes.
And uh, if you want to also, I know there was some discussion with HPC. Um, while we're on the slide, want to talk about the, the, the chimney, uh, just to let the board know. Why that's moving and what the, you know, the, what the thinking was there?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'll probably go too far, Ryan, so you can cut me off if you, if you, if you think I'm overdoing it, but.
I will.
Okay, it's getting late, right? So basically we have a, you know, a gas-powered furnace right now and, and a gas. Powered water heater and that stuff's going to go away because we're kind of converting to heat pump. And sort of super insulating the house and, you know, at the end of all of that, we thought it might be nice to have a, a fireplace in the, in the front of the house. On the first floor and this chimney now is kind of just a, a cinder, a single cinder block stack. It's not stuccoed, it's not a very attractive thing, so. Um, and the interior layout kind of allows that chimney to come out right at the intersection of where the dormers meet the main roof. So I thought this was kind of a, a more appealing chimney and I, you know, I'm going to widen it a little bit and. Stucco it and, and so that's kind of how that chimney ended up there. Um. You know, the, the, this sort of doghouse dormer on the front and, and there's a hip roof and I, I want to keep these features the same and I'm going to. Preserve woodworking or replace so that all of the details and proportions remain the same. Um, I do have uh, one change at the front and that is that the door is being replaced with kind of a more historic door. Cause it's kind of a, a metal clad sort of pressed door there now. I'm going to wrap the whole house in insulation, you know, so the, I'm adding basically an inch of thickness to the walls on the outside to get an outer. Outer layer of like thermal break insulation around the house. So there's a very small. Implication on the FAR there because it's sort of measured to the backside of the sheathing, so that insulation kind of ends up in the FAR. And then additional FAR is the dormers in the attic, the entire dormer thing, because of course I don't have any five-foot ceilings in a. Dormer where I'm trying to approach the wall plate. And at the very back of the house, there's this beat-up old one-story extension. Um, in which the walls are misaligned with the main walls, the house by four and a half inches on one side and seven inches on the other side. And bring those out flush with the walls and kind of re- tear that thing down and rebuild it in its otherwise existing footprint. So there's a very minor uh, FAR implication there of, you know, five square feet or something. Where I'm just taking those little kind of cutouts. I, I think you can probably see that best in the floor plan.
Yeah.
Ryan, if you have that in your slideshow.
So uh, skipping just the, the, as we just trace over these, uh, on, on the left is kind of a cutout profile, so you can see where the. The bulk of what we're talking about is on, in the attic floor and, and, and um, a lot of thought went into, you know, where the, the five and seven foot. Lines are and how little of it would be um, frankly, uh, floor area. Um.
Right.
The next, this diagram here, uh, this is your, um, this is the attic plan and the. Uh, red area um, is what would have been floor area. Uh, under the rules, um, frankly, recently, the, the seven-foot line. Uh, and then the blue being the five-foot line and there is um, uh, if you were to do the math here, there's a hundred eighty uh. Nine square feet um, difference between these two that, that essentially makes up. Um, the, the request here. Um.
Correct. So the red line represents an area that's, you know, a third or just under a third of the floor area below, so it would have been exempted out. And I, and I had not intended on putting any, you know, false ceilings at six foot eleven or anything like that. It was going to be kind of a full cathedral. To the ridge, which is at the exact same height that the ridge is now, so I haven't raised the ridge. I hadn't put in any fake ceilings or anything like this to try to conform to that FAR requirement.
Uh, we, we put this slide in here, if you want to briefly, you know, talk about the, the restoration efforts that you've done. I know HPC was really pleased with what you did and I don't know if it's going to the same level of detail, but this is not just a. Refinishing of, of the attic and adding dormers. You're, 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 you know, almost fully restoring this home. So maybe you can talk to about a few of the, of the historic elements that you'll be saving or recreating.
Okay, um. Well, the porch is in terrible shape on the front, so I'm probably going to shore up the roof. Remove the columns, restore the turned columns. They're really pretty. It's just the bases have kind of rotted away, so I'll have to do a stave kind of patch on the bottom. Uh, the balustrades have been replaced with kind of pressure treated two by two, so I came up with a historic. Uh, section for those balustrades at the front and the stoop is concrete now with a, a wrought iron handrail. That somebody crashed a car into before we bought the house. So I'd like to take all that down, put in wooden steps. I'm going to kind of do like local black locust. You know, a, as a wood on the, on the treads and on the deck, the deck itself and then. Um, basically all the exterior finishes are going to come off. All, it's all rot, you know, all the siding is kind of in, in terrible shape, rotten and the paint, paint is falling off. So I'll take all that off, add this layer of like insulation, insulation on the outside. Put back up the exact same siding profiles, cedar shingles on the second floor. The dormers are new. On the second floor, the dormers are new, but I sort of went back and forth between horizontal and cedar shingles and the. Uh, sidewalls of the dormers and the walls of the dormers, and ended up back at cedar sh- shingle there, I thought that was the best idea, and I kind of consulted some friends on that, so. Um, in the end, the frieze, the cornice, everything, I'm gonna, I have Yankee gutters, you know, Elizabeth Kim was pretty excited about that. Because there's not a lot of Yankee gutters in this neighborhood, so even though they're hard to maintain, we're gonna restore those or probably replace. But replace them in the same proportions that they exist, and then I'd like to do uh galvalume gutters where the Yankee gutters aren't. So the lower porch, upper uh dormers, you know, I want to do kind of galvalume gutters, galvalume finish, it's a kind of a. Letty kind of finish and all the downspouts and so forth, so does that kind of cover, I'm gonna go three-tab asphalt on the on the on the roof itself.
Excellent, no, thank you, um, and and I think you mentioned before, you're you're converting from the uh gas and and going with a a heat pump.
Yeah, we're doing heat, we're we're converting to heat pump, we're pr- gonna get rid of our gas line completely. Um, the thermal performance of the new windows is high and the mechanical system is gonna be a well-insulated home, so it's, you know, a a low-consuming home. We have an electric car, so we're gonna uh install a better charger than the hundred twenty volt one we have. So to so on, so the idea is to get this house sort of performing well from a thermal and energy consumption standpoint.
Yeah, so the next slide shows the the side profile where you can see the the new uh shed dormer and how far back it's kind of tucked from the front. Um, so that the existing, existing front dormer and and other roof details will will remain. Um, and then this tiny little reconfiguration uh in in the back, that was the, that kind of oddly misaligned location that you mentioned before.
Mm-hmm. Do you want me to expand on that, Ryan?
Sure, sure.
Okay, um. So the dormer size was really uh selected, you know, the non-conforming uh application only permits fifty percent. So we went with a kind of a fifty percent dormer length. Um, and set it back as far as I felt I could or should with a kind of a very small deck on the back, which is gonna be a nice place to have dinner. And um, the uh back addition, I doubt it was built with. You know, it it was not built with any, you know, best building practices, so I think I'm gonna completely remove the foundation of that and put a new poured foundation in. Same footprint. Uh, where that gutter drops at the back addition, there's a a very small shadow line because it's only four and a half inches back. Uh, a little step there, so I want to eliminate that because that, this is my kitchen, and that kind of creates a problem in the corners with the cabinets. I'm gonna shrink the deck a little bit. And add a a Bilco door staircase, which has to be five feet from the setbacks, I think I I can't remember now, I think I set it back. You know, six or six and a half feet from the side yard, so that's gonna be the way we get into our basement where. In the existing conditions, there's a a door on the kind of driveway side, it's very awkward.
So I just wanna talk about the the variances that we need here, um, and they all flow from the um. Extreme undersized nature of all the lots in this neighborhood, again, three thousand square feet is the prevailing size. Is his, is the size of the uh the the King Smith residence and sixty-five hundred square feet is the is the requirement in in the zone. Um, the, we are reducing um impervious coverage here. Um, and uh, talking about the floor area, we ultimately need a hundred eighty-nine um square feet. Um, uh, that is the 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 request for for in increase here. Um, a- as moving to the next slide, we kind of overlaid on the attic plan to see. The the difference between what would have been compliant a few months ago, hi- hidden under the dormers, and now is two hundred square feet. That's the difference in square footage on the third floor between five and seven feet, that's kind of shaded in blue. We need a hundred eighty-nine square feet for for the variance request, so I I'm uh Abe's been able to kind of sneak and and hide all of this space. Under under these dormers, um, and you know, uh, floor area is floor area, but. Um, the the part that we're really talking about, the variance relief that was needed, is the um, the least conspicuous and and most hidden. And I I think we would agree with H P C, most tastefully done type of floor area, rather than a a full-height. Uh, story or building, it is hidden uh essentially under these shed dormers. Um, so the project would have complied um uh when Abe got started with this. Um, so we we were asking for a less than a a hundred eight ninety square feet, uh which is e- essentially. Uh, a a little less than the sum between the seven and and um five-foot levels under the dormer. Um, uh, it's all hidden under those those dormers, which we 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 feel fit the neighborhood. Um, and and don't um uh cause any ne- negative detriment uh to any of the uh surrounding properties. Or or the neighborhood or the zoning plan. Now, I have a diagram from neighborhood character here on the right. Um, uh, the, there are rules about dormers uh in Princeton and some kind of exceptions given for them, particularly for height-to-setback. Ratio, uh uh Abe mentioned before, well, he kept it to fifty percent of the width, those are, those are the rules for, you know, the understanding that dormers are a. A a good thing and a good use of of space, so the the code has some provisions for it. There's not an exception for for floor area, I don't mean to suggest that, but but um, we do want to point out that the the. Dormers like this are the least imposing way to get some usable space um into uh into a um uh. An attic here, and and I, um, I hope it goes without saying, but just the, even with proportional F A R. When you are mo- less than half of the uh required lot size, um, uh, it it it. It helps, but just doesn't begin to accommodate what um, you know, what is reasonable or kind of necessary to to. Make up for the undersized lots here, so we are less than fifty percent of the required. And uh uh unfortunately, um, that just doesn't um. Doesn't allow for uh the even modest um increases. Or or uh additions to homes to make them to uh modernize them. Um, there are other variances here, um, but uh this slide is meant to point out that they're all existing ones, so um. Uh, the point three-three feet to the overhang, which is the side yard setback variance situation. Um, that's because the this tweak of an addition kind of keeps this, respects and keeps the same um. Uh, shape and line of of the house, so that's the existing condition. Um, and as it's extended back slightly and reconfigured, um, while it's the same situation that is now. Because we are uh reconfiguring or and doing a dormer uh in that space along that same line, uh a new variance is needed. Even though it's the same distance from the lot line as as the house physically is now, and the same thing goes for the uh. Um, the combined um side yard setbacks, that's an existing condition that we are technically. Uh, increasing the nonconformity, but by doing these, um, we think tasteful and 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 hidden uh dormer treatments. Um, uh, we we hope you agree that as H P C did, that this is really the the best way to. Not the only way to to a- allow for the modernization uh of a all of a very modest home. Uh, for a a family's needs without having any uh negative impact on the zoning plan uh with the neighborhood. Um, or neighboring properties, so I'm happy to take any questions, um, uh, the board might have that that. Other than explaining um the situation here, I don't believe there are any any comments or or um. Uh, conditions suggested by uh Mr. Bridger's memo, but uh it it's kind of, we are, we're happy to address them or or comply, thank you.
Board members, any questions?
I'm curious about the parking, is there parking? Is there a driveway, is there a? What was that, was that a just a grassy knoll that you park on?
There's a driveway there and it's, there's, there's nine feet, uh, nine foot six inches between houses. The driveway is indicated as eight point two feet. So we we park in there and, you know, we get kids in and out of car seats and everything, it's not, it's doable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, hearing no other questions, well, uh, Mr. Penny, I want to open this up to the public, any comments?
Uh, nothing further at the moment, uh, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, uh, I'll open the public portion of the hearing, Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You said yes?
No, no, sir.
You said no, okay, sorry. Um, okay, so hearing none, uh, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Kennedy, closing eloquent closing remarks.
I'll do my best and I'll save my, someone mentioned grassy knoll and and grassy knoll and and Kennedys don't tend to go well together. Right. But um, uh, thank you for your time uh tonight, um, this is an applicant, and we're very, again, appreciative of H P C. And their process and working with them, uh, it's a tight, small, undersized lot. Um, and uh, the applicant and uh um Ms. Kim and her um board spent a a lot of time. Um, with with concept reviews and and their hearing to to find the the best way to sneak a few square feet, frankly, into a a modest home. That fits for this neighborhood, and we, we hope that uh, um, unfortunately, our our real hope would be that the zoning in these, in these zones could be fixed. So that, uh, you know, small additions like this wouldn't require all this expense and work, we understand that that that's not doable. But for for this neighborhood with lots this undersized, uh, for for this well-done of a of a an addition. We hope you agree that this is appropriate uh and meets the requirements, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, board members. Questions, comments? I think this is gonna be very nice, I think it should hopefully serve as a model for other houses in the neighborhood. A nice nicely detailed project.
Thank you.
Welcome, any other, any comments?
I agree. I mean, it's a nice addition to the neighborhood, it's gonna, it is a full. Full redone house. Out of the top and it's a, and it's a big improvement.
Yeah, 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 I'd say it's gonna be very well done, obviously, with his taste and his skills, I think he's gonna bring it around, it'd be really nice. I, just one question, you have the lattice work hanging off the porch, is you gonna, is that for growing hops up there, or what's the, what's the idea around that?
You know, uh, Sabrina doesn't want me to put that back up, so that's, you know, and it's not in the application with H P C, so I don't think I can do it.
Sugar snaps.
We we, you know, we we have the garden in the front because that's the southern exposure, uh, so we planted sugar snaps and and cucumber. Climbing cucumbers, it's pretty nice shade there in the summer, but we're we're not gonna, I think we're gonna get rid of it.
I move for approval.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion of the motions? Okay, all right, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yeah, yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for doing this, gonna be nice.
Thank you very much.
You so much.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Okay, um. I guess the question's going to be just, um, Derek, Karen, board members, we're gonna hear, we have two more cases tonight. Um, Wes Scott and um, okay, so with a spoon, do you think we'll get through both of those tonight? I mean, it's ten o'clock now. Probably get through one more, you think?
Think one seventy-one Westcott should be fairly straightforward, um, and then we should begin uh the next one if you're.
Okay, is that okay with the board?
Just for the benefit of the applicant or uh sacred coffee roasters. Is there a time at which the board's gonna adjourn, so the applicant knows that? Not past eleven or?
Comments, Michael?
She'd say half past eleven?
No, no, what I said.
Past eleven.
Not past, or are you saying?
Oh, okay.
So we'll go to eleven?
I don't know until we get there, I mean, there was one time we all felt like moving on. Let's just keep going and see how far we can get.
I mean, I'm okay with that, let's see how long Wes Scott takes and then we'll make a decision.
Can can I make a quick note on behalf of the the sacred variance? We are well-caffeinated and we're willing to go as long as you are.
Very nice.
And we can have coffee delivered if you need. I'll go back to mute.
Okay. All right, okay, well, let's start, let's go to our next case. Um, the next case is case number Z twenty-two dash two ninety-seven. One seventy-one Westcott Road Block two point oh two Lot twenty-six in the R one zone. Karen, is the paperwork in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order, the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo?
Chairman, thank you. Donnachad Dennehy and Courtney Orlando are the owners of one seventy-one Westcott Road, seeking a C two variance permit. Uh, the conversion of a previously approved garage workshop to a finished living area be utilized as a musical com- composing space. Um, the garage workshop area was approved by the variance by the zoning board in nineteen ninety-three because it did not meet the required front yard setback. Um, the board's approval was specific to the space being used as a garage workshop. And um, the conversion of the space to a musical components, composing space, uh, requires variance relief. Um, property's located in the R one zone, it's a complying property. Uh, required front yard setback is thirty-five feet, the existing proposed uh front yard setback is twenty-five. Um, the previously approved variance, case number six hundred and nineteen ninety-three, approved a sixteen-by-twenty-foot garage. An exception to the required thirty-five-foot uh yard setback at the time, the resolution specifically approved the use of the space as a garage workshop. The current owner, uh, Mr. Dennehy would like to convert the um garage workshop office to a music composition area. It's uh in relation to his profession, it's my opinion that the interpretation that um approval. By the board is required, um, admit this change as it's different than the previously approved use. And uh, we seeking consideration under the C two uh variance request, and that's really the case in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I I would only say that there are, uh, it's gonna add a um, the existing garage door will be moved. Three windows will be constructed in a place, in their place, and an additional window will be added on the wall facing the house. And the garage is attached to the house by a covered walkway.
Okay. Okay. All right, um. Who will be refereed, oh, why do I ask? Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and and Derek, um. A- a- again, um, as as you heard, this is an a- a- an existing condition at uh one seventy-one Westcott Road. Uh, the the board had previously approved a non-conforming garage. Um, you'll hear from the applicant uh who would like to do something a lot quieter than than park cars or use it as a workshop. Um, and essentially convert the the front garage door uh in into a more residential-looking um. Structure for that fits his use better, you'll hear, um, and we we think that the a garage in this location. Um, is 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 certainly non-conforming, uh, you'll see many references in your, in your code to not wanting to have parking in. Um, in front yards, um, limiting the number of garages, and then some very specific rules about motor courts. That having this current configuration you'll see does not comply with, so. Uh, we feel that repurposing this existing structure actually um. Makes a more, uh, while not conforming, a more conforming situation than what was approved by the board in in nineteen ninety-three. Um, with with that, uh, Mr. Danny, if you wanna, um. Um, with, with that, uh, Mr. Danny, if you wanna, um, uh, unmute yourself and I'll ask that you could be sworn in to give some testimony tonight?
Mr. Dennehy, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you could briefly introduce yourself, uh, um, uh, your connection to, to Princeton and, and importantly, I, I think, you know, explain, uh, you know, this was described to, uh, uh, um, by Mr. Bridger in his memo as a composing space, but, you know, maybe give the board the benefit of what that means, because when I first heard it, I'm thinking, uh, uh, drums or, you know, sousaphone, uh, um, testing facilities or something like that. And it sounded like it's something a, a lot quieter and simpler than that.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm a composer and I'm a professor of composition at the university, uh, here in Princeton. And, um, I, we're here now since twenty fourteen. First of all, we rented off the university at Harrison Street. Uh, but now we moved into this property in twenty eighteen. And, um, I love Princeton, actually. Previous to this, I was a professor of music in Trinity College in Dublin, where I'm from. And, um, I don't know, I, I like the quieter life here in Princeton, actually. Nature is very inspiring all around here. And, and, um, but it's, I have three children. Uh, it's lively in the house and I've always dreamt of having a quiet space to compose. Um, which is mainly done in my head. I have a key, a clavino of a keyboard, which is volume controlled, so it's quiet. And then my laptop, uh, and then a lot of paper. And, um, I'm a classical composer. I write, I've written operas, um, I write a lot of orchestral music. Uh, I'm writing, what am I writing now? A chamber piano concerto at the moment. Um, yeah, and so that's what I would like to, to do with this, um, room.
Thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Casey, uh, like we normally do, I think this one is twelve slides. We're gonna have our, our slideshow marked as our one exhibit this evening. That's okay? And, uh, if we could, you know, it's always good to orient the board to, um, uh, where, where, where we are. Obviously, this is, uh, arrow points to your house. What, what, I have to just point out some of the other, um,
Yeah.
here.
Well, with this, uh, big, um, uh, building complex that you were over there, that's Elm Court, um, where there are lots of, I think, um, apartments and things like that. Um, and then how can I, can I do, uh, I think I can annotate, can I? Um, this brings me right back.
Though, don't, don't, uh,
Okay, I won't do it.
Hold your breath.
I don't know. Where, where your, where your big, uh, this brings me right back to the pandemic when we were, well, we're still in it, but, but we did all the lectures, uh, on Zoom. Um, in fact, that font is the same as my lectures. Uh, the, so where the green pin is, is where our house is. It's a corner lot uh, between Elm Road and, uh, Westcott. Uh, we're on Westcott at the corner of Westcott and Elm. And, um, yeah, and there you see it there, lost, I think it's twenty-six. Um, and, uh, we're, uh, it's a kind of a ranch house. Um, yeah, there's the frame to it. Uh, these are, this is the building, uh, uh, and this is the framed garage that I want to, uh, convert into a finished space, uh, for, for me to compose. Um, i- i- we, we don't need a third garage, me and the kids, me and the bike, actually. Uh, and, uh, we just have two cars, my wife and I, so we, we really don't need a third garage. So, uh, yeah, there it is. Um, uh, uh, on the side, and there you can see the two opposite, two garages already, opposites. That's, uh, uh, as Derek was, uh, explaining in his, uh, notes, they, they got a variance for this because it wasn't backed far enough, as it were. Today, it, it should really be recessed. So it's, it's my feeling that if we change this into this, um, composition room, it is, um, in a way, more of a finished space, more keeping with the residential, um, quality of the uh, neighborhood, which is a lovely neighborhood, rather than having this, this sort of glut of garages where, where you could actually sort of use power tools if you want, as, as it stands, right?
Here's a, what it looks like, maybe, um, obviously from the motor, you know, almost the motor court-like part of your, uh, part of your driveway and next is.
Oh, yeah, sorry. You go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, uh, this is the, uh, elevation, uh, as it is currently and, and the floor plan for the structure. Um, this door to the left leads you to a, I guess, a covered walkway to, to the existing home?
That's right. Yeah, absolutely. And then this is the proposed, um, conversion of it.
And as far as siding goes, you'd be using, uh, similar materials to what's, uh, what's there now?
Yes, absolutely. Completely in keeping with what's there in the house. Um, and it would be, we'd replace the garage door with three windows. Um, a- and then there's also a s- a s- window looking onto the back, uh, there as well.
So, um,
Yeah, as, as, oh, yeah, no, you go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, um, the, in, in nineteen ninety-three, you know, this, this structure was approved at its current location. Um, this, uh, the, the variance needed was the, the front yard setback. Uh, this is twenty-five feet, as is the other garage, um, to the street where thirty-five feet is required. Uh, but here, we're not looking to change any footprint. Nothing visually from the front will change. Um, the side that is, uh, currently street-facing and neighbor-facing remain exactly the same. It's the internal side that will change. Um, w- we feel, uh, that the, um, check, removing the garage door and, and replacing it with residential style windows is more in keeping with the type of structures you'd see in this zone, rather than, um, kind of having a court surrounded on two sides with, um, parking areas and, and garages. The trend in Princeton, um, with neighborhood character has been to pull garages back as far as possible. So by limiting this extra uh, bonus garage that got approved in the nineties, uh, it, it comes closer, we think, to the intent, uh, or in flavor of these, um, the neighborhood character zoning requirements and, and almost, uh, uh, to a conforming motor court configuration. Um, the currently it's screened from the road by some mature trees. Um, that won't change. Uh, it, it's, um, protects and screens it from the road now and, and will later. Um, the use, um, you, you heard testimony about what, what the applicant will use here. Um, uh, the combination of kind of insulating and, and fitting out the space and being frankly a quieter use than a, uh, uh, workshop or even garages or power tools that someone might have, uh, otherwise used in a residential garage, um, as initially envisioned in nineteen ninety-three is, is, uh, likely a lot more impactful than, um, the, the minimal use that the applicant will use here. Um, and then, um, there's no, uh, uh, unfortunately, uh, both because of an easement behind the house, um, and the environmental impact of, of taking the structure down, uh, it, it would be a, a significant, um, hardship to relocate this elsewhere, rather than to reuse the, um, existing structure. Um, certainly happy to answer any questions about the proposed use or impact. Uh, uh, as we just get there, I'll just ask, um, the applicant, I know, um, not only did we, you do the notices, but there's a lot, some, some extra outreach to the neighbors. I mean, did anyone raise any concerns about noise or, or, um, you know, anything kind of like that with, uh, you know, when you, when you knocked on the, the, the doors, um?
Uh, no, uh, uh, I spoke to all the local neighbors to say that I was doing this. Uh, they all know I'm a composer, actually. So, uh, no, they were, they were, um, supportive.
And I, I, I assume that, uh, since you've been a composer and doing this already, that, uh, you don't.
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Loud noise complaints now.
Yes, yeah, in the house, yeah.
Um, so, uh, with that, certainly, uh, and respectful to the next applicant, uh, I'm happy to, to answer, um, uh, any questions, uh, they have about this conversion of this existing space, uh, from a garage to a, we think, while not conforming, more conforming use of a structure that's already on this site.
I ha- I have one question. Are you gonna take up some of the paving in front of the, um, the, uh, the one, the single, are you gonna take up any of that paving?
Oh, oh, it, it wasn't my plan to do so. Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Is the, is the building heated?
Um, well, it has electricity, but, uh, I'm going to make you, and I actually talked to Derek about this as well, actually. Uh, uh, um, um, a mini split system that's already there for the bedroom, which is a heat pump, air conditioner. I- it's going to be replaced with one that'll do that and, and the, and the composing room. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, um, Mr. Kennedy, we're gonna, no questions.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Claudia, has anyone, this, we'll open the public portion of the hearing. Um, Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
No hands.
Okay. All right, um, we'll close the public portion. Again, Mr. Kennedy, we're gonna go into executive session.
Um, just again, thank you, thank you all for, for hearing, uh, this applicant tonight. Um, whether this should have been approved in nineteen ninety-three as a garage with these extra spaces or, or not, it's the current condition and, and we think that by, um, removing that garage door, removing that non-conforming third, you know, boxed in ultra motor court configuration and, and making it a more residential feel, that it, it, it uh, improves from the current condition. It'll be quieter, um, um, and, and more useful for the, uh, for the homeowner, uh, for sure than an, an extra, um, garage space, uh, which i- if we're actually used that way would, um, likely be more, more, um, impactful to neighbors than the sealed up and likely headphones keyboard use that's proposed here. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go into executive session now. Board members, any questions, comments, motions?
Yeah, I, if I might, I do have a comment. Uh, when I first saw this, I thought, well, this is gonna be a garage composing, it's gonna be a garage band, heavy metal music. The neighbors are gonna complain. And so when Professor Dennehy explained quite the reverse and the noise is going to be in the house with three active children, um, that changed my perspective. And one other point was, I do think it would be improved by, by picking up on Chairman Cohen's remark about landscaping a bit in front of this.
Yeah.
Sort of greenery, garden bushes.
Okay.
Again, would mitigate the motor court type impression that you get. So, but I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I, Steve, I was wondering, and maybe it's a question for Derek. Could destruct, if, if we approve this, um, could there be other uses to it? And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. Um, I di- I didn't quite wanna get into a, a one-use approval. You know, when it had to come back if somebody wanted to do something else. So.
Hmm, that's an interest, that's a very interesting comment. You're right.
You know, I, I, my first, you know, inclination is to try not to restrict it unduly.
That's a good point, Michael.
It's not connected, so it'd be awkward to use it for, I mean, it might theoretically could be used as a home office. I mean, or something, but it, to try, it has no bathroom, no kitchen. It couldn't be, uh, a secondary, it's probably too small for a secondary dwelling unit.
Right.
Or an ADU.
Um, but as part of the main house, though, um, yeah, I'm not saying an ADU, but 'cause isn't there some type of linkage to the ma- main building?
It just the, just the, the roof part, so you actually have to walk out to, to go into it. I mean, I would imagine, like, part of the way I'm thinking is, is it, it's a, it could be a study, you know, that you could have as a study, you know, 'cause it's similar sort of thing. I don't know.
Well, I guess the question is, right now, it's not, um, fully incorporated into the house.
No.
Sounds like there's a covered walkway. So Derek, in the future, if the applicant wanted to do that, um,
They'd have to come back.
Variance is for setbacks, but they wouldn't need a variance again for, for the use because it would become part of the house, correct?
Right. I mean, if it stays where it is now, I think if the board said it could be a study or, you know, there's no bathroom in it, so the uses are somewhat limited. Um,
Mm-hmm.
I agree with the testimony that his composing is probably less noisy than if somebody had a full worn woodshop in there with power saws and compressors going, so, um, that's a good point, Michael. I mean, I think if, as a, as a, a study area or a artist, then I, I don't know, but I, I don't wanna have to have somebody come back here every ten years when the
No.
composing use is a pretty unique use. There's not a lot of composers.
Hmm. Couldn't we say something about? Well, really.
Is there, is there a, 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 a number of permitted uses for a building like this? And then that's what it would be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A what? Michael, I didn't understand that.
A number of permitted uses under the current code for a building like this. It's just, we wouldn't limit it to one use. We would let it be whatever.
The code will allow.
The code would allow.
Yeah. I guess it could be a home office or it could theoretically be a bedroom, right? Doesn't have to be attached.
The big.
So I, I think unless we limit it to a use, just being silent on that, it's available to whatever permitted use would be. And that's this particular, you know, re-upped variance would be covered by that.
Good approach.
Okay.
Thank you. For a comment about decomposing, I guess I won't make that one.
Derek, if someone wanted to add a bathroom, would that be required coming before zoning or?
Yeah, if there was a full bath or it increases the density of the use.
Derek, I'm sorry. What did you say it would do?
It would increase. I would think they need to come back.
If the bathroom was interior.
Yeah, and it.
If the bathroom was interior to the space, it wouldn't, they wouldn't need to come back, right? Or they would.
Is it just gonna be a a powder room? I mean, I guess a powder room would be all right, but it just leads to being an ADU, which it doesn't really need to setback.
That, if you put a bathroom in there, the place would be way too small.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a very, it's, it's a nice study, but it's, yeah, okay. I think, I think it's, like, Michael's suggestion is appropriate.
All right, so just, just to clarify, so the board would like to, I mean, obviously the applicant is asking, you know, his application says, I wanna use it for an office composition room. So the board's proposal is, say, that's fine, we approve it, and no other language about restricting future use, correct?
Right.
Actually, I'm not sure. I mean, the last resolution, it's, it was through some time ago. Uh, but in that case, I mean, it was actually being constructed. It didn't even exist then. That, you know, it was an approval to actually build it. So now it exists. So, um, I mean, I, I was thinking perhaps you could. I mean, I, I was thinking perhaps you could say, you know, they can use it as an office, uh. Composition room and any other permitted residential uses. I don't know if that's opening the door to other problems, Derek, but. Can that work or?
I think that's acceptable.
Yeah, okay, is that okay with the board?
Yes.
This would may.
Hey, would someone like to make a motion? If there are no other comments? Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll first?
Wilson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mister Floyd?
Yes.
Mister Schreiber?
Yes. Yes.
Mister Stein?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Go forth and decompose.
Thank you very much, uh, thank you Derek, throughout all of us, you've been very helpful.
Glad, thank you.
Okay, it is ten twenty-nine, and I guess the state says. We don't necessarily have to take, start a case after ten thirty, so we're in under the line. So, our next hearing. Is, let me introduce it, and then we'll talk about timing. Our next hearing is, uh, case number Z twenty-two dash two seventy. Three hundred Witherspoon Street, block eighty-nine oh two, lot four, in the B one zone. Do we wanna limit the time? Do we wanna set a closing time, or we just wanna start and see how far we get? Board members?
We'll try to go fast if that's any, uh, assistance to your decision.
It's what everybody says.
I mean it, though.
I have an odd circumstance because I was asked to participate in a ninety-second play sometime in the next. For half hour or so, but I think I'll, I'll hang in here, I don't know.
We could always take a two-minute break if you need.
Well, alright, well, let's, let's do this, let's start.
I don't know when this is gonna happen, it's.
Okay.
How, how many, if any, consultants do you have?
We have the two owners of Sacred who are speaking. One is somewhat of a technical expert and one is talking about the delivery, which are really. It's the roasting and the delivery are the two issues that were raised by the staff and the planner. And we're gonna try to focus in on those two issues and address only those two. And so that's, so it's me and those two co-owners.
Do you have any plan, so no planning testimony?
Correct.
Right, okay.
We, we.
I don't know if, if the screen is an indication, we says we've got twenty-six people. Participating, I assume that. I, I assume that's people out there who are watching.
Eleven people out there watching.
Right, so. For the benefit of the people in the public who may, if that's why they're watching, cause they'd like to comment.
Well. Uh, I'm sorry.
They may be interested in this.
I think it, it might make sense to indicate when the board wants to, can be, uh, you know. Uh, terminate the meeting tonight. What are the names of the people that need to be brought over to the panelist's area? Mister here?
Pardon? Oh, the names of the people, uh, Serge Picard and Jonathan Haley.
I think we should give them the opportunity to be as quick as possible.
We will try.
Well, I, I think Karen's right, for the people in the audience, we should really come up with a time we wanna work till.
Um, I wanna bail at eleven, and we've also in the past discussed. About our staff getting home if they're down at the municipal offices. And we would be more considerate of them going forward.
Okay, so let's say, we'll say, we'll say eleven o'clock, so.
There is, uh, there is also someone that wants to speak.
Okay, alright, well, uh, Derek, you wanna summarize your memo, we'll get started.
Actually, we have our, uh, interim, or Don Dobremilsky, Daniel Dobremilsky, excuse me, is filling in for our planner, so. He's done a memo, and I'm gonna hand off to him to set the table on this one.
Okay. Need to be sworn in?
Uh, I think I started to do that then, but I will now. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do. Daniel Dobremilsky, uh, for the planner for, for this application this evening. Um, thank you and good evening, everybody. This application is requesting minor site plan and variance relief approval of D. And a possible C variance for coffee roasting, storage and distribution. Use in concert with a new retail shop at the site at three hundred Witherspoon. The zoning officer has classified the roasting and delivery aspect of the new shop to be a manufacturing use. Which is specifically prohibited in all zones under section ten B dash two five four. Uh, four of the municipal code. Um, the zoning and engineering report offers a very detailed description of the property and the use and the variance relief that's requested. Uh, there's this property received the site plan approval in twenty twenty. If you recall, it was the previous, I believe Princeton Packet Building, and now is, is a kind of a retail, uh, type of use. And in particular, in addition to this, um, the, the, previously, they were granted variance relief. From the requirement to have off-street loading space fifteen by twenty-five. Uh, that's potentially will be exacerbated by this use. And the review by the zoning officer, which would be a C variance from section ten B dash two eight three. Under the, uh, the proofs that the applicant is to make, they've indicated that they proposed. The proposed micro roasting presents an efficient use of land, bringing in experiential. Retail use and innovative art and craft to the area. The locally crafted coffee will also be distributed to local shops. And by locating this use in town, the community will benefit from new jobs, fewer and shorter vehicular trips. And improved access to goods and services, promoting the general welfare of the community. And. The applicant indicated that the permitted coffee cafe and roasting uses are permitted. The added element of distributing the coffee to other local cafes or retailer is what triggers the variance condition. It suggested that the proba- prohibition of manufacturing is really, uh, in the code is really intended to restrict food processing. And manufacturing plants, whereas a proposed use is more appropriately categorized as retail. Uh, permitting the use will enhance the retail and cafe offerings in the community with an added element of the art and craft of roasting operation. Uh, which will be visible from inside the, the cafe. The addition of the goods and services will promote the well-being of, for the residents in the community. It seems that the very small size of the roasting and distribution use, which will occupy a hundred and fifty-four square feet. Which is four point five percent of the space, uh, that the cafe and point four percent of the property. In combination with the emission control system, uh, are the most compelling characteristics of the proposal. That established how this use is different than the type of use actually targeted by the code prohibition. That the applicant should provide detailed testimony regarding the size of the use, delivery operations. And the emission controls to fully demonstrate that granting the request, requested relief will not pose a nuisance. Or detriment to the neighborhood and community, particularly the nearby residents and school. Presuming that the convincing evidence and arguments are offered, the positive arguments offered in the applicant's variant statements would seem to outweigh the potential. Um, minimal impacts, um. The applicant, the application for additional variance relief does not appear to include any significant modifications to the site. Or an architectural improvements approved with the recent site plan approval. The applicant should describe any exterior site or architecture modifications associated with the application. And the location of the venting or, or emissions control system should be reviewed. The logistics of how the product delivery services will occur should be examined to determine if the existing parking lot. Could safely accommodate the vehicles and movements associated with this aspect of approval. It should be determined if any additional or modified visual screening or buffering is appropriate relative to this proposal. If there's any questions? That's the report. I do have a.
I just like to mark this as exhibit B one.
Yeah, that, that was dated, uh, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt you, George.
But excuse me, one second, excuse me. Karen, did I ask if the notices were in order, I, I think.
I.
Side tracked, yeah.
I'm sure you did, but I, I'll indicate again that it is in order and the board does have.
I'm sorry, alright, Stephen, I think you were wrong, sorry. Somebody asked a question.
Yeah, I have a question, what hours of operation would the roasting, um, take place?
Well, the roasting will be between two and a half to four and a half hours per week. And so because this is designed to be experiential retail. Will wanna do the roasting while people are there so they can actually see what happens. So this is an artisanal micro roaster. And it's gonna be in a glass enclosed room so that people having coffee there will be able to see their bean, their beans being roasted.
Okay. I mean, I like the smell of roasting coffee, I hope that when you drive by, you might actually get some of that.
Well, I'm gonna have to apologize, the way they're setting it up, you won't be able to tell that they're roasting, they're gonna have an after burner. Which was. He's gonna talk about that, if, if you can tell that they're roasting, you're gonna have to use a heat, a heat camera to see heat coming out of the vent.
Okay.
That's what they've designed it to do because we all live in Princeton, I live two blocks away, and we wanna keep our, our neighbors and friends happy.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if I can do this presentation in fifteen minutes with.
Mister here, just slow down, we, there's another memo here from Mister Bridger, Mister Weissman. Does the board wanna have Mister Bridger present this or, um?
I, I think so, I think we need to hear part of the record.
Thanks, Chairman. I'll just bring you up to some of the background on this property, it was the subject of a site plan in, uh, twenty twenty, which added a, uh. Conversion of eighty-six hundred square feet in the existing war warehouse and, uh, an addition of six thousand one hundred square feet. Was done within the existing building, that space is occupied by Capitol Health. Um, recently, uh, Tiger Labs was approved to occupy other parts of the building, and there was an exterior, um. Stair approved on the, uh, south side of the building, um. We did call out for a, uh, a variance for, uh, a loading dock just because of the dropping off in the, uh, pick. Delivery of the coffee. Um, the applicant states that it will be used not only in, in the existing facility there, but it will also use. In their other facility in town, or their other business in town, and to local coffee shops and restaurants in Princeton. Um, so there's a variance for section ten B two eighty-four for the loading dock. And then the use variance for the use that's not permitted to manufacturing is, as Dan Dobremilsky, um. You know, spoke about, and from our point of view, uh, the main areas of consideration were. The exhaust, we wanted to, uh, just determine if there would be a negative effect on the adjoining neighbors, um, we would like a. Uh, a formal roof plan if, if the application is approved, showing where the exact, exact exhaust will be, how high it will be. And we'd like to hear the applicants, you know, how they deliver, uh, the coffee and how it's offloaded at the site. And that's. The high points of our memo, it's, it's pretty straightforward, um. But those are the, uh, the issues that we thought needed consideration, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to consent, speak to them.
Question, questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to mark this as exhibit B two, and Derek, your memo is January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, right? I think that's correct.
It's, uh. Yeah, January twenty-three.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Mister here, do you want your, uh, uh, client sworn in now?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, if you could take your mute off. That's. Jonathan Haley and Serge Picard, gentlemen, if you'd raise your right hand, you swear or from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Shall I start?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, we'd like to put our presentation up on the screen if, if, um, Jonathan can, we can share, share his screen, he's got the presentation. And I'll, I'll start off by, uh, quickly noting that, a, a spoiler alert that. Um, there's gonna be about two to three deliveries of beans per year to the site. Maybe two or three per week, taking beans to their shop on Nassau Street, to other places in town. There's gonna be an after burner to get rid of all fumes and odors. And so, I think as I mentioned earlier, you're gonna have trouble find, noticing that they're actually roasting coffee, you're gonna have trouble seeing that there's an increase or change in traffic. But that'll be explained by, uh, Mister Haley and Mister Picard. So, we're gonna quickly go through the current roasting operations. What they plan on doing for the delivery at three hundred Witherspoon, and how they plan on roasting at three hundred Witherspoon Street. And really, the, 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 the town staff and the planner hit on the two big issues. The effect on the neighbors of the gases generated when roasting coffee beans, and the effect on the neighbors of loading and unloading the coffee beans. Go to the next slide there, Jonathan. So testifying today on behalf of Sacred Coffee are Jonathan Haley, Picard, Co-owners of Sacred Coffee. As you can see here, this is the location of, of the, of the building, where Homestead is, Sacred is, Capitol Health. You can see Witherspoon Street on the right, if you can go to the next slide. And it, I think, it, you may have noticed in the last slide, it's, it's zone B one. This is an aerial view showing the three hundred Witherspoon property, the, the line from the ward site, that's it enclosed.
Mister, Mister here, I'm just gonna interrupt you.
Okay.
I appreciate all the knowledge you have in the application, but I think we really need to hear it from your client so that you're not testifying.
Okay, we're about to go on the next slide right here. I'd like to introduce Jonathan Haley. Mister Haley, would you please introduce yourself and tell the board about Sacred's operations? Its commitment to sustainability and your plans for roasting at three hundred Witherspoon Street.
Yeah, hi, hi everyone, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, speak in front of you. I appreciate the time. Uh, I'm Jonathan Haley, I'm a Princeton resident. I have, uh, three children who started out at Crossroads and are currently in the public school system. Uh, last June, I completed my firefighting certification, and I'm a volunteer firefighter down, uh, Witherspoon Street as well. Uh, my first two, uh, children were born at the hospital across the street here from three hundred Witherspoon, and. I walked home with them to, uh, my first home in Princeton on Moore Street, so this neighborhood, uh, is near and dear to me. Uh, I moved, uh, to Princeton in two thousand and five, and my first friend here in Princeton is sitting next to me. He's also my business partner now, uh, you'll hear from him shortly. Uh, about eleven years ago, uh, over a beer at one of the Momo restaurants, uh, Serge convinced me that. Uh, my future was in coffee and, and not marketing at Blackrock, uh, which is how I ended up here. Uh, in, in, uh, Princeton originally. Now, uh, Serge and I are owners in a coffee roasting business that's actually based in his childhood home province of. Now Serge and I are owners in a coffee roasting business that's actually based in his childhood province of Quebec, Canada. We're commercial roasters. We pack and roast and pack coffee for supermarkets out of that facility up in Quebec. And we're actually building a new plant just a few miles from that location to expand our business and move it into a more sustainable operation. And again, I'll hand off to Serge to give you a bit more detail, but as our, as our kids have started leaving high school and he and I have more gray hair, we've decided that we want to focus on our passion projects and really put our energy behind those that are meaningful and make a difference. The proposal that you're going to hear from me and Serge from today is, is one of those. It's the intersection of actually two big passions, one of which is bringing the art of coffee to the town of Princeton and, and its visitors. And Serge has made it a personal and corporate mission to put sustainability at the, the heart of everything that we do. Our coffee shop at twenty Nassau was our first go. We, we were actually in an office over there and decided to see what it means to make a cup of coffee and not just roast and pack it. And, and so we opened up that shop and if, if you haven't had a chance to go, I, I encourage you to, we put an espresso machine in there the opposite way. Specifically so that the patrons can see how the coffee is made while you're waiting for it. And our baristas are lovely people and are always anxious to talk about coffee, which again is something that we're trying to do that's for us exciting. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, Bill. I hand it back to you.
Jonathan, could you describe this drawing here and talk about the coffee roaster and its position within sacred?
Yeah, absolutely. So sorry, the slide you're looking at is the site plan and sacred is indicated in the blue box. There's a little green box up in the upper left-hand corner. That is the location for the micro roaster that we're talking about placing in the space. The, the idea is that you, you'd walk up to a coffee counter. Actually, I think the next slide has the the plan itself. You walk, you walk up to the coffee counter and you could kind of look back beyond where you're ordering and see the, the roaster itself along with the sacks of unroasted or green coffee in, in the background. And as, as noted earlier, it's just a very small part of the overall footprint. Most of this is a congregating place. And but, but the real concept here is that you're seeing where your coffee is coming from. That's, that's in your cup. And we'll make that a part of our dialogue with, with all the patrons. So it becomes an experience for the, for the consumer.
Can you go to the next slide, please?
Yep.
And would you please discuss your current roasting operations?
Yeah, absolutely. So this, the, the location down here at three hundred Witherspoon, which we're, we're super excited about is it gives us an opportunity to talk about everything I just did, but it also eliminates a lot of inefficiencies. So currently we're roasting up in Munaki, New Jersey. It's a fifty-five mile trip up and fifty-five mile trip back. Our green coffee or unroasted coffee comes from the port. Goes to that location. So there's only a limited amount of storage there. And so there's, there's monthly trips for the green coffee to the roaster in Munaki and then the weekly trips to gather the roasted coffee and bring it back to Princeton. The volumes that, that we're talking about for our shop and the restaurants here in Princeton that we support are, are that can all be done in an SUV. Once the coffee's back here in Princeton, it, it makes its way to our shelves in our coffee shop on Nassau Street.
Okay, let's see. On the next slide here, you describe the proposed operations at the three hundred Witherspoon facility in terms of inbound deliveries and then how you'll be taking roasted beans out.
Yeah, so I mentioned the, the great benefit would be we'd bring six months worth of green coffee to our facility here would be stacks on, on, it would be bag sacks on a pallet. So we're talking about two or three deliveries of that green coffee a year instead of the monthly trips from the port to the facility currently in, in Munaki. All of that would be delivered in a truck similar to what you see here on the slide, the Homestead delivery truck. We'd take it off with just a pallet jack and bring it into our facility. From there, we would obviously, as I mentioned, if approved, we would roast on site and that would serve both the proposed cafe here and three hundred Witherspoon as well as our shop up on twenty Nassau and that would just be done as it is today. With, you know, deliveries of, of basically bags in an SUV.
So Jonathan, will you propose inbound delivery green beans have any impact on traffic in the Withers, three hundred Witherspoon area and the surrounding neighborhoods?
No, again, this truck that we're talking about coming in is something we do two or three times a year. We take about twenty to thirty minutes max to, to unload. So we're we're probably talking about an hour of delivery to the, to the building in total. So based on all the construction that's happening around here, I think actually, you know, eventually there will be less traffic in, in my eyes.
Okay. Do you mind going to, to the next slide here? So this, would you mind talking about your planned operations on Witherspoon Street?
Yeah, and so very different than what I talked about, the other part of our business where we've got a commercial roasting operation up in Canada. This is really, I know we keep saying it, the art of what we do, but it, it really is. It's a little bit of the art and science at a micro level that we're talking about the, the image here. I'd love to say we're the first to propose something along these lines, but there, there's a lot of these out around the country. You can see in the left-hand corner, a, a small batch roaster. So we're talking about a similar roaster to that. And a similar visually viewable way to the rest of the shop. So this gives a good, I think, concept of what we're talking about. Again, it's, it's just about seeing it, understanding it. Bringing in the education of it and being able to talk about it with, you know, all the Princeton residents and, and people that come to visit. The, the beans that the, the quantity, I'm going to hand it off here to Serge because I know we're already getting close to eleven o'clock, but the amount of coffee that we're talking about roasting is, as mentioned early on, each batch is about a ten-minute roast. Serge will talk specifically about how that is roasted and the impact of that, but the total volume that we're talking about would consist of about two and a half and then growing into probably close to four, four and a half in the next couple of years, hours per week total. And I, and I know that Bill had said that, you know, we absolutely want to make it a part of the, the customer experience, but I think if there's a a need to designate certain hours, I think we can, we can efficiently market that to the people that want to see it and have them come to the shop at that time as well.
Mister Haley, the picture you're showing the board, is that a sample of what it could look like? Are you saying that's what it is going to look like?
No, I'm saying this is a, this is definitely a sample of what it, it could look like. This is an existing shop. Actually, I, I know that here in Naples, Florida. It is just the most visually close way to conveying what we've talked about doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, can you go to the next slide and I'd like to introduce Serge Picard now. Mister Picard, would you please introduce yourself and tell the board about your experience roasting coffee beans and describe your planned roasting operations from a technical perspective?
Yep, yep. Thank you very much for having me. I'll try to keep it very short. I know it's getting late and don't need to talk about my experience that much. But I've been in the Princeton area, I'm a resident for about twenty years now. And same as John, I have the, we have three kids, my wife and I. That went through the Princeton school system. One graduated two years ago from PHS is now at the in Colorado Boulder University, second year. Our second son is a junior at PHS. And our third and youngest Laura in eighth grade at PDS and she loves figure skating. So I've been in the coffee industry for about the twenty-five years, but mostly on the commercial side. So very familiar with equipment manufacturing and the processes. Without getting technical, and if you have additional questions, please feel free while I'm explaining. Jonathan mentioned a couple of times, the green coffee. Green coffee is basically how we get it in the verat bags that we see here at the bottom from pretty much every exporting country in the world that grows it. So the coffee bean is, if you think of a New Jersey red cherry. The coffee bean is the pit of the cherry and it's the exact same thing for a coffee cherry. Where instead of having one pit, we have two halves, which are typical coffee beans that are green when, until roasted to a certain level. That is going to last between the roasting process between seven minutes up to fifty minutes. For intended purposes here, we'll call it ten minutes. And the lower roast time will obviously generate a very light roast. And that fifty minutes is probably going to be a Starbucks-y, very dark roast type of coffee. Sacred roast on the slightly lighter side, so the ten-minute mark basically explains how we get with our volume of current production to two point five hours of total roasting per cycle per week. The roasting itself occurs at temperatures between three hundred fifty and four hundred degrees. And that's attained at the, the end of the roasting process. The first six minutes of the ten minutes are basically evaporating the water out of the green coffee. When we get it from the origin, it has twelve percent humidity. And the aim of roasting the coffee to make it lighter is to bring it down to four percent. So as I just said, the first six minutes are very heat consuming. And the coffee bean is absorbing the heat, elevating the temperature and dissipating the humidity. The last four minutes is where the interesting stuff happens that Mister Stein was talking about. Where you start converting the sugars and the amino acids into flavors and aromas. That's where you get the scent and the feel. This is another type of, of typical coffee roaster, the one right before that. Where the black drum section is actually where the coffee is being roasted. The auger on top is where you put the green bean. And there's a trap in front of the coffee roaster. Coffee is exactly like popcorn. After the roasting process, it has to stop immediately. Otherwise it's going to burn or keep roasting. So you expel the coffee from the, the black drum into the stainless steel pan that we see in the front and that's the cooling pen. There is air that's being sucked through there that cools the coffee usually for a period of two minutes. So as mentioned, we, coffee is roasted at temperatures that are slightly undercooking and severely under grilling. So if you bake anything, you're probably going to turn on the, the oven at four hundred minimum. And leave it there and grill it. You're going to be at six or eight hundred degrees. That's why there's not a lot of fumes or smokes associated with coffee, mostly aromas and vapor. Maybe we could look at the next slide. This, again, another variation of a coffee roaster, but also has some interesting additions. So instead of being a horizontal roaster on the right, the stainless steel structure. It's a vertical roaster. Same concept, nothing changes where you're incorporating the green coffee beans and rising the temperature to the target time and temperature to obtain your roast level. What's interesting in this picture is what we decided as co-owners to do for the location if, if the project is approved here. The structure that's triangular also with what seems to be a drum on top with a bucket underneath is an after burner. So unfortunately for Mister Stein, we're burning the aromas and the flavors or anything else that would come from the roasting process from the last four minutes of the roasting process. To make sure that there are no fumes or anything that would be unpleasant to our neighbors. The bucket at the bottom of the, the triangular structure is actually a chat collector. Coffee, exactly like popcorn or peanuts when they're roasted, has a small translucent skin on the outside, which it's called chat. That gets blown off when the coffee bean expands and we just recuperate those and they're compostable and just or regular organic matter. That falls by gravity. So the after burner is basically a double burner. That occurs at the last part of the roasting process and uses heat up to eight or nine hundred degrees to burn any odors, smoke, volatiles that could be left in the roasting process. Therefore, if you're standing at the foo or the, the venting pipe of a coffee roaster with an after burner, you're most likely not going to see or detect any process because ninety percent has been eliminated completely. There's still going to be steam, but a lot more heat.
Serge, could your operations at three hundred Witherspoon Street be suitable for commercial scale roasting?
Uh, no. Well, absolutely no, because we're talking about the capacity of the roaster, which becomes a limiting factor. It's a, a ten kilo, basically twenty-two pound per batch of coffee. So you can't produce anything commercially with that. The type of coffee roasters we use up north at our Sherbrooke facility that Jonathan was talking about roasts close to one ton per batch in the same ten minutes. So that's commercial or complete manufacturing.
Okay, thanks. Jonathan, can you go to the next slide? And can you please describe the slide that's on display right now?
But that's going to be the, actually the, the inside location of the sacred facility. And what is actually pretty important in the green circle, it identifies where the venting pipe would be. It sits after the after burner. Which is the farthest corner that we'll see in maybe the next slide.
Yeah, Jonathan, you can do that.
Exactly. So just for visualizing here, A is Homestead. Red is the sacred footprint and D would be, is Capital Health. Again, the green dot, which is a position of the stack that's identified, the green dot would be where the stack would be coming out of the rooftop. So it couldn't could not be within our footprint any further or further away from any other point or location or neighbor.
Serge, when you're roasting coffee beans as proposed and someone is standing up there at the end of that pipe with their nose over it, what would they see, sense and smell?
They sent a lot of heat. And when the afterburner and the process is going probably close to nothing, you would smell more coffee. Within the coffee shop, there's different ways to release aromas and flavors of and the scent of coffee, you could grind it or infuse it or use an espresso machine. And that's why it smells like coffee when you walk into a coffee shop when they're making it. Or you make a pot of coffee in your kitchen in the morning. So the roasting of the coffee releases the aromas, but with the afterburner, you're basically burning all the aromas that would be left. So you'll detect quite a bit of heat. As we mentioned, the, the afterburner runs at eight to 900 degrees.
So for about four minutes, you would, you, is when it's okay. Jonathan, can we go to the next slide, please?
And how many more slides do you have?
We have about three more substantive slides. This one's going to last about five seconds. This was the view, elevation views of the building as submitted and you can go to the next slide, Jonathan. And there's been a modification. You can see in green on the top, they've added glass doors where the coffee beans will be delivered. And above that, you can see a glass box where there is a eight-inch diameter, three-foot tall pipe that Serge was talking about. That will be where the gas comes out of it. Behind there, you can see a wall and because it's, there's a two-story area there. So the neighbors behind the building won't be able to see the stack. I think that's the main point to get out of this view here. And you can see that from some of the other views. Yeah. So if we can, if anybody has questions, if we can go to the, the next slide here. So we're requesting two variances. One is that the requirement that a loading space of 15 by 25 feet be provided. And the second is the prohibition against manufacturing. We'd like to do micro roasting on an artisanal scale. You can go to the next slide, Jonathan, and
Excuse me for interrupting, but I think, I think we're, it's, it's 10 after 11 already and I, I don't, we're not going to finish this this evening, I don't believe. So do we want to, at what point do you want to break it? I mean, unless, unless the board members want to stay on, I mean, we're
We leave that to you. We have two slides left, but we also understand that there might be a discussion desired. So
Steve, the other thing is perhaps Claudia said at least one person wants to speak, perhaps would be helpful to just explain to that person that when this is getting carried to, so that that person, you know, will make themselves available unless the board wants to hear comment, but the presentation isn't done. So kind of premature, I think.
No, and I think, I think really, you know, it's probably going to be a, a little bit yet. So we would carry this when, to the next hearing, the next hearing date, which is March, what? Is there time available then? Derek?
Excuse me, there is time. 22nd.
So again, if anybody is anyone in the audience and wants to comment this, we, if we do carry it, it'll be carried to the March 22nd hearing and there'll be no need to re-notice, I assume, right?
Correct. So this, this is the, this is conveying the information out of the public to tell them. Well, I guess the board should decide now so that we can announce is it being carried. So is that the board's pleasure since it, oh, it's almost 11:15.
Yeah. Board members, what do you think? I think in fairness to Karen and, and Derek, maybe we should wrap it up. Michael's right.
Yeah, we made a decision to end at 11 o'clock. Let's stick to that.
Okay. All right. So we'll carry this till the next hearing and Mr. Here and the applicants will rejoin us then.
And the public will then, the applicant will finish their presentation and then the public will have the opportunity to comment. If there's anybody who would like to do so.
Yeah, we thank you all for letting us go this late and sorry, we're keeping you up this late. We were hoping that it would be so interesting. Be able to let it in.
We, we need coffee to keep us awake.
Okay. Next time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. So we'll carry this to the next hearing and adjourn unless somebody have any, any comments before we adjourn. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.